So, we're getting started. It's eleven o'clock. I'm Bob Klein, just the moderator. I'll introduce the table here in a second and then the Colonel will speak. We have a couple of rules because we want to make sure everybody gets to talk who's signed up to talk. So, this is the public hearing for the Enbridge Line Five Wisconsin Segment Relocation. Again, I introduce myself already. I'd like to introduce the table first. So, we have Colonel Swenson, who's the commander of the St. Paul District for the United States Army Corps of Engineers. I'll be the only one saying a talk at the proceeding when they speak. And they'll speak very little, I'll be honest. Speakers over there are going to speak. We're going to hear from you. Then we also have Chek Ekson, sorry, how do you pronounce that? So, he's the chief of the regulatory division for this district. And then we have John Carroll, who's district councilor. Okay, Colonel, give me the microphone.
Good morning. My name is Colonel Eric Swenson, commander of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, St. Paul District. And I am the presiding officer for today's public hearing. It is important to me that we hold this hearing near the proposed project site. And to do that today here in Ashland, we owe a huge thank you to our hosting facility, the Northwood Technical College, and the college staff for accommodating this hearing and all of us today. So, thank you. Enbridge Energy has requested the Corps, the Corps grants a permit to discharge dredge and fill material in waters of the United States and install pipeline under the White River, a navigable water of the U.S. This work would facilitate the construction of Enbridge's proposed Line Five Wisconsin Segment Relocation Project. The Corps is evaluating Enbridge's application pursuant to the Section 404 of the Clean Water Act and Section 10 of the Rivers and Harbors Act of 1899. The Corps does not have authority over the overall construction or operation of pipelines or any substance being transported within the pipeline. I appreciate that you may have questions for the Corps. However, during today's hearing, my staff and I will not be able to respond to questions or comments. Please understand that your comment is just as important to me when provided in writing as it is in person. Due to time limitations, each selected speaker will be allotted three minutes. And all those wishing to provide verbal comments during the hearing may not be allocated time. For these reasons, I have team members available on-site today to accept your written comments. And we are also accepting written comments provided via U.S. mail or email through the end of the day, July 5th, 2024. All comments, verbal and written, will be considered as part of the Corps' decision. I ask that each speaker can provide their comments independently and that each speaker is afforded the opportunity to share their views without interruption. With me today are members of my regulatory team, Office of Counsel, Public Affairs, Information Technology Staff, and the St. Paul District's Security Team. Today's hearing will be recorded and posted on our Line Five webpage for public viewing. Additionally, we have Corps reporters here to transcribe all verbal comments. The transcript will be made part of the Corps' administrative record. We will take short breaks approximately each hour called by myself or as delegated to the hearing moderator. During the breaks, we will not be accepting or transcribing comments. Additional information regarding the Corps process and alternate methods to provide comments are available from my team members outside this auditorium. Finally, thank you to all attendees with me here today. I am heartened to see such interest from the public. Now, please give your attention to Bob for more detail on today's hearing. Thank you.
So, I kind of want to do an editorial thing. I'm sorry that we're reading the script. This is a legal proceeding, so we're going to make sure we're doing it right and then you get, you know, fair treatment to speak all your mind. I'd like to tell you a little bit about, you know, safety features. Obviously, you're in a school, and the bathrooms, you probably already know, are down the hall there, the drinking fountain there. If there is an emergency of any sort, it'll be determined when staying in the building or go outside. I'll tell you that. At that point, I'll be told by security if that's the case. AJ here, AJ is my assistant here, so don't get me out of track. So, let me read my script, which is hopefully going to be fast. Okay, so before we call the first speaker today, I'm going to review some basic information, the rules and expectations for the hearing. We're going to have AJ just kind of paraphrase what you see on the wall here in just a second. And it's just rules that will get speakers to be able to speak clearly and not have any problem at all. Okay, today's hearing will be in two sessions. You're in the first session now. We'll take an hour break at three o'clock and rejoin at four o'clock until nine o'clock. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. You have ticketed speakers, you all know that, you heard it out there. I probably don't have to go through that too much, but ticketed speakers must register at the sign-in, which you all did. Each speaker will have three minutes. There'll be a timer you'll see up here in a second. And as you get closer to your three minutes, like maybe at the two-minute mark, I will quietly say one more minute. You don't have to stop talking because I'm talking. I'll just say one more minute so you know you got one more minute, you know, be summarized whatever you're going to say. After three minutes, we have to kind of cut the mic off and move to the next person. So, there'll be two people there standing all the time, but only one person will be speaking. The timer will be displayed, and I just mentioned, to optimize the number of speakers, we all need speakers, mentioned that back and forth, is that right? And if you kind of go over, kind of have to say, you know, you've got to sit down because we've got to hear it for everybody. We can't allow people to talk, continue to talk. And you can say whatever you want, as long as it's not feign or nasty. You can talk about any subject you want, speak a whole place specific to this project. When you're called to speak, give us your name and your spelling, your name. You don't have to give us any personal information like social security number, email address, and all that stuff. You do have that opportunity, as the Colonel mentioned, if you want to write what you want to say and put it out there, you can put whatever on that document you want. Realizing that this is a public hearing, so it's going on in WebEx, so please don't give anything personal to yourself. Okay? Speakers who are supposed to speak because they went through the lottery, but aren't here in the room, we just have the capacity to move on. You can see the numbers up there, the speakers know their numbers, and they will speak in that order. And then all attendees are welcome to quietly join in or exit the room. And, you know, so we're not going to close the doors and that stuff. But just do as quietly as possible. You can see there's cameras all over, and cords all over the place, so please be careful. And I wanted to kind of refrain from sharing information back and forth because it's going to be disruptive. Again, we have a recorder that needs to hear everything, and we also are recording, you know, audio and video. So, you know, please try to keep the noise down. And I'm sorry, okay, I mentioned that already. Can you do the last one? Sorry. Okay, for those persons who do not give verbal comment, the Colonel already talked about the three different ways to do it, so I won't go through that again. But they have the website here with Corps of Engineers, there's email and regular mail, so you have an opportunity. And I think it's time to comment and close on July 5th, and close the business, I believe. Okay, so please do before that. Okay, and I mentioned it, and I want to cheat saying this. It's public information, so please understand when you write or mail or whatever. We need to let everybody see it legally, so make sure you write what you want to write. I talked about the restrooms already, talked about the alarm in the water, so we're okay there. So, next up is, the Colonel is the presiding person here, so he's the one who talks about time. So, he'll tell us when we take a break, he'll tell us when to start. I will only communicate with these speakers, and we're not going to go back and forth. But I'll just tell the speaker, I'm sorry, your time's up or whatever, but he's not going to be answering questions, otherwise we're never going to get through all the speakers that we need to. So, Colonel, sorry. Did you call the next speaker? Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. First speaker, come on up. And the second speaker, you can stand side by side if they like. And I won't do this every time, but just remind you, your name and spell it, please.
Hi, first off, I want to thank all of you for allowing me the opportunity to speak here at the Line Five Public Hearing. My name is Sadie Paradise, S-A-D-I-E, Paradise, P-A-R-A-D-I-S-E. And to me, Line Five is very special. I grew up in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan to a Line Five pipeliner, and I grew up learning all about Line Five. Line Five was and is what fills my parents' propane tank to heat our family home, their home. Line Five provided my dad an excellent career and also provided our family with the resources that allowed my brothers and I to grow up comfortably in a heated home, attending a heated school. Now, I'm proud to say that both my oldest brother and I are employed by Enbridge. My brother, a Line Five pipeliner, has a beautiful home and family in the Upper Peninsula. Line Five fills his propane tank, giving his children, my nieces and nephew, a heated home and a heated school, among other things. Line Five is personal to me. As I drive back to the Upper Peninsula to visit, I follow Line Five the whole way. It is literally the pathway to home. I now currently reside in Wisconsin and get to work with, work with and advocate for Line Five daily. As an employee, I understand the level of safety and commitment Enbridge has to the environment, our communities and our people. Enbridge goes beyond expectations and it is truly inspiring and rewarding to work for such an impactful organization. If Line Five were to shut down, it would be detrimental to the Midwest. Propane would not be easily accessible as three propane refineries would be forced to shut down. Line Five allows us to have access to heat not only our homes, but our businesses and our schools, not to mention the dependency used by the agriculture industry in Wisconsin and throughout the region. The proposed reroute was very carefully assessed, ensuring the utmost respect towards cultural resources, water quality and risks surrounding erosion and sedimentation. The proposed reroute considers impacts on wetlands, water bodies, habitats and so much more. The economic boost the Line Five project will bring to Wisconsin is also something to highlight, adding $135 million to Wisconsin and bringing in 700 family sustaining jobs, the jobs like my dad's, my brother's and mine. Working on Line Five, allowing our families to be in a heated home and attend heated schools. In closing, I'm here advocating my support for Line Five. I can say with integrity that Enbridge does everything top-tier, and we are here to show respect for the Bad River Band by removing our pipe from their land while simultaneously showing the utmost respect to the environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. My name is Dennis Bock, D-E-N-N-I-S, B-A-T-T. I do live in this area, and I'm a member of the Operating Engineers Local 139. I'm also a statewide pipeline business representative of the 139. While the Operating Engineers Local 139 is headquartered in Peewaqui, the union maintains district to be a good community member. I'm sorry. While Operating Engineers Local 139 is headquartered in Peewaqui, the union maintains district offices in Madison, Appleton, Eltona, as well as state certified training school in Keloma. Operating Engineers Local 139 has more than 11,500 active and retired members. With... Operating Engineers Local 139 and I, along with most Wisconsinites, consider Enbridge to be a good community member. They employ hundreds of our neighbors and friends, pay millions in taxes and safely and efficiently transport North American sourced and produced products that are vitally important to the safety of our families and to the health of our economy. The Line Five relocation project does not increase the use or capacity of the crude oil or refined products. It simply replaces the portion of these working pipelines at the request of a sovereign tribal nation with new, safer piping. The Line Five relocation project was thoroughly surveyed and selected to avoid sensitive resource and areas. The project design mitigates or minimizes the impacts on wetlands, water bodies, threatened and endangered species habitats, archaeological and cultural resources and other areas that may impact the health and vitality of the forests within the area. As a lifelong outdoorsman, I am very pleased that Enbridge has taken these important steps. Wisconsin-based business Michael's Pipeline has been selected as the mainline construction contractor for the $450 million reroute. Michael's employs hundreds of our local 139 members throughout Wisconsin. The project will bring an estimated 700 family sustaining construction jobs, hired largely from the region's union halls and will provide an economic boost for northern Wisconsin communities. More than 10% of the project budget, which is $46 million, will be spent specifically with native-owned businesses, including the training and hiring of tribal members. The Line Five relocation project is necessary for the health, welfare and safety and economic security of the normal northern Wisconsin residents. Many of us rely on propane to heat our homes and businesses. Ensuring a sufficient supply of propane at an affordable price is highly dependent on the Line Five relocation project. I urge you to issue the necessary permits for the Line Five relocation project as quickly as possible. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good morning. I'm Anne Allen, A-N-A-L-L-E-N. I'm the Director of Environment Sustainability for Michael's Corporation. I'm here to express Michael's Corporation's support for the Enbridge Line Five project. We appreciate the opportunity to be here and participate in this review. We also appreciate the thoroughness that the Army Corps and Enbridge has taken into the assessment of the project with respect to potential environmental impacts. It is imperative the purpose and need of the Line Five project is realized to continue to safely transport crude and natural gas liquids from Canada to Wisconsin to the U.S. while avoiding the Bad River Ban Reservation. Energy security relies on all forms of energy, including crude and natural gas liquids, to heat our homes, schools, businesses, power transportation, fuel industry and agriculture here in the state of Wisconsin and throughout our region. The proposed route alternative is the best route for the project as compared to the other alternatives for several reasons. It reduces most environmental future impacts compared to the other routes, including aquatic resources, wetlands and natural registered historic places along route alternative RA-01. It provides a balance reducing impacts, overall pipeline length, acreage effects, while providing more distance from the Bad River Reservation and downstream waters. Furthermore, on our review, we agree the project will not have significant adverse impacts on environmental resources within the Army Corps jurisdiction. Thus, an environmental impact statement, or EIS, is not necessary. And the continued set of the environmental assessment EA process is in the best interest of the project and the Corps' need or review. With Michael's experience building pipelines throughout North America, we believe the Army Corps' draft EA adequately addresses the best selected construction methods to safely and efficiently minimize or avoid environmental impacts, those of which will be temporary in nature during installation and restoration of the Line Five pipeline. Michael's is a family-owned, Wisconsin-based construction company that has operated in Wisconsin since 1959. Our owners and employees are avid outdoorsmen and women. As such, we would not support a project that would compromise the wetlands, waterways and habitats of the environment of our beautiful state. Michael shares Enbridge's commitment and approach to construction of the Line Five project with not only the environmental requirements of the regulatory process, but also with the core values that we both share. As a union construction company, we will work with our local union partners to fill at least 700 construction jobs, largely from the region and the union halls here locally, that will also provide an economic boost for northern Wisconsin communities. Michael's and myself support Enbridge and the Line Five project.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Good morning, Colonel, Army Corps of Engineers Board. My name is Dan Olson, D-A-N-O-L-S-O-N. I'm a resident of Superior, Wisconsin, and I live a mile away from where the Enbridge terminal is in Superior. I want to run through a couple of statistics, and you're going to hear them over again today, and I appreciate that. This is a $400 million, $450 million project. And Enbridge and Michael's Corporation has entered into a project labor agreement which will ensure that good wages and benefits are paid to all the people that are going to be working on this project. It's going to be a union project. I'm the business manager of Labor's Local 1091 in Duluth, Minnesota, and we represent about 1,000 people in this area from here to some counties in Duluth and surrounding in Minnesota. The, you heard the $135 million economic impact that this project will have. There's also 10% roughly of this investment going to native-owned businesses. So, the partnership that Enbridge has garnished with the communities in the region is something very, very good, very impactful to the community. Line Five is a major supplier of propane to this area, through this area. And it will heat in the dead of winter up to 280,000 homes. So, the partnership that Enbridge and the tribes and the unions and the communities, Ashland and Iron Counties, those are the things that are important here. We have a workforce that will build this pipeline as safe as every step that Enbridge has taken along the way to ensure the communities, make sure that the water is protected, the air is protected, the land is protected, the animals are protected, the people are protected. So, the partnership that we have with everybody is something that is very important to all of us. To drill under the White River, there's processes for them that we believe will be done safely and with our partnership with Michael's Corporation. They are a good Wisconsin construction company, a good Wisconsin pipeline contractor. And we have the skilled workforce to do this work for you. And we want to make sure that everyone in this community be heard, one way or the other, in this hearing. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Craig Summerfield, C-R-A-I-G-S-U-M-M-E-R-F-I-E-L-D. I am the Senior Director of Environmental and Energy Policy at Wisconsin Manufacturers and Commerce, or WMC. In that capacity, I currently serve on the Wisconsin DNR's Drinking Water and Groundwater Study Group, as well as the Air Management Advisory Group, and previously served on other DNR advisory committees related to environmental rulemakers. WMC is the combined state chamber and state manufacturer association. We are the largest business association in Wisconsin, representing approximately 3,800 member companies of all sizes and from every sector of the economy. Since 1911, our mission has been to make Wisconsin the most competitive state in the nation to do business. Wisconsin manufacturers and other businesses depend on access to affordable and reliable energy in order to grow and maintain jobs in Wisconsin. Line Five is a crucial piece of infrastructure we need to ensure Wisconsin businesses continue to have access to affordable and reliable energy. It's difficult to overstate the negative impacts of shutting down Line Five. If we shut down Line Five, a major propane supplier has warned that it would close three refineries in the region, including one in Superior. This would severely impact Wisconsin's energy supply and say nothing of lost jobs. Moreover, and that's made 2,100 trucks per day would be needed to leave Superior and travel east on Highway Two in order to transport the crude oil and natural gas liquids currently moved by Line Five. Conversely, if the Line Five project is approved, we will protect jobs at the Superior refinery and protect access to reliable energy for businesses as well as homeowners in Wisconsin. In addition, the project will create 700 family sustaining jobs and provide an economic boost for northern Wisconsin. Moreover, Michael's, as had been mentioned previously, is a Wisconsin-based construction company, has been selected as the mainline construction contractor for this $50 million reroute project.
Way made.
Of course, with a project like this, protection of the environment is a top priority. Importantly, Enbridge has put forward an environmental protection plan that was crafted to meet or exceed the state or federal environmental protection and erosion control requirements, specifications and practices. The project design reflects a mindful plan designed to mitigate impacts of wetlands, water bodies and threatened or endangered species habitat. In addition, the Line Five relocation project route was thoroughly surveyed and selected to avoid sensitive resources and areas. In summary, Enbridge has proposed a plan to relocate Line Five safely in an environmentally responsible manner. Wisconsin businesses depend on critical energy infrastructure like Line Five in order to create and maintain jobs in the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
We're talking about the reroute here, and it seems to me that the White River is the only one mentioned. We're talking about the reroute here, and it seems to me that the White River is the only one mentioned. And it crosses much of Zivi, and I don't know why it's not considered a navigable waterway because it ain't be doing in Gima and we didn't, um, Zivi. I took my canoe down that. I took my canoe with my kids down that river. And so, I'm not, I'm not sure why you're not including this in the horizontal drilling because I navigated it. We've been navigating this for thousands of years. This is our home, our treaties, our treaties with the United States government, right? This is not just your land to permit on. This is ours too. We share it. We share these resources. 50% of the harvestable resources in the Seated Territory are ours. And to put them at risk is to put my children's food at risk, my grandchildren's food at risk, my grandchildren's water. I don't even have grandkids yet, but I'm thinking about them. They're here, just as we were, just as the ones we signed those treaties to maintain this space for us, for all of us, out of me. And now it's my obligation to do the same. Enbridge has shown, over in Minnesota with the Line Three Replacement Project, that they're not very good at horizontal drilling. They breach aquifers. Ain't going to happen in my house. This is my home and will always be. This reroute is a slap in the face to the Bad River Nation. It's a slap in the face because we said out of the watershed. We didn't say off the reservation. You said off the reservation. We said out of the watershed. You are still crossing Washkezi V. You are still crossing Washkezi V. These are our waters, all of ours, not exclusive to Anishinaabe people, all people, human beings. You, me, all of us. It feeds us, it closes us. All our needs are met by this land, not by Enbridge. I can drink the water here right now. Let's keep it that way. Big witch is annoying.
Thank you. Representative Green, please, sir.
Yes, thank you. I am State Representative Chance Green. I'm here to speak on the app of Line Five, and I appreciate everyone coming out today. I appreciate you guys allowing me to speak, and I appreciate Northwood's Technical College for hosting. The biggest issue as State Representative that I've heard about this line is safety. This line has been around since 1953, and it has proven not only to be the most efficient way to move essential fuels through northern Wisconsin, but it also has proven to be the safest. With that said, Enbridge has done its due diligence when it comes to permitting and taking all the proper steps that the state and federal government require when it comes to permitting, and they've gone above and beyond in that, on those issues. They've also done all their due diligence when it comes to not affecting wetlands and other things downstate in other essential areas like Copper Falls when it comes to routing the reroute around the Bad River Reservation. They've done all their due diligence, I apologize, all their due diligence in that regard, as well as ensured all the landowners in that reroute, they are on board and they're ready to go. When it comes to the economic impact on northern Wisconsin, this is going to be huge. It's operating roughly 700 jobs that not only, good jobs. These are good, high-paying jobs with benefits that will definitely benefit northern Wisconsin. It has roughly $135 million impact when it comes to northern Wisconsin. So, this will be huge when it comes to our small communities and benefiting them. And also, as a State Representative, it would have a $6.4 million additional tax revenue for the state of Wisconsin, and that could be spent towards other things such as schools and other needs that the state has. So, this is a fruitful pipeline, and it has been in the process for four years. It is now time to pass those permits, and let's get this job done. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
My name is Jim John, J-I-M-F-Y-O-N-D-Y, Junior. I'm owner of Third Drive's Cultural Resource Management, and I'm here to support permitting of the Line Five project. I got started on this project back in 2019, and then 2020. I was also part of the Line Three projects, which you permitted way back when, after a lengthy permitting process with that. I did the cultural resource survey work as part of this project to ensure the protection of those resources that were mentioned before that are valuable, the cultural resources. I'm a Lees Lake Band member, from the Lees Lake Reservation. And we, as well, like the Bad River, for the Line Three, we removed off our watershed and outside of our reservation. That happened, and those resources were protected and avoided on other part along the road. the road. And I worked with the Ponte Lacs Band and was doing way during that survey process back then. I'm an individual tribal business owner, and I have benefited working with Enbridge and making sure that the sites are protected and these resources are protected for future generations. People have mentioned it provides economic opportunity to change people's lives around and make it better, for the wages that we pay to our employees and to our members. And I hired tribal members from not just my community, but from other reservations we need as well. Very supportive of the project and part of the process that before it's done. I worked with your staff for many years, over the course of my career, over thirty some years, working in this natural resource, cultural resource field. And your staff is actually working regarding and making sure that all the patient process is followed to the T, as this meeting is, and along with the regulatory, protecting the resources under the National Advisory Reservation Act as well. With that, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and speak, and you go up and then go up. Big which?
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
My name is Mike Mertes, M E R T E S. I'm here against the proposed line five reroute and continuing illegal operation of line five. I designed the sign to clarify the real issues surrounding line five. Enbridge has confused the discussion surrounding line five with here relevant arguments about pipelines in general that left a mistaken public impression that line five is crucial to the economy of Michigan and northern Wisconsin. It is not. An industrial logistics and supply consulting firm in 2003 highlighted these findings. A multiple of alternative supply sources exist. There is no risk of supply shortages. A reconfiguring of a supply of line five markets would not entail any novel approaches. Usual and customary for the industry is alternatives exist and are already supporting the line five. This picture of me was taken in 1953, the year the pipeline was installed. This is the technology we're dealing with, right? As old as I am, and it was expected to be decommissioned in fifty years. So we have, and my pipelines will only carry blood since that's what they're originally designed to do. We have no idea what kind of oil-based chemical cocktail is flowing through line five today. The people impacted by the Enbridge Kalamazoo River spill are suffering a number of maladies from exposure to these undisclosed chemicals. Enbridge says chemical mix is trade secret. Other companies don't know what their toxic potion is. Other companies know. Enbridge doesn't want the public to know. Non-disclosure, to keep the public in the dark is their real trade secret. When the reroute was chosen, it's because it's the shortest and cheapest one, while staying as close to the boundaries of the Bad River Reservation as possible. There's no indication that the reroute being proposed is with any concern for environmental responsibility. In fact, it makes the risky situation worse due to drilling chemicals and environmental destruction during the construction. Now, there's one small element of this whole issue that does make sense to me. It's about the only believable thing I've heard from Enbridge. Enbridge says that the old pipeline is disrupted a bit in Michigan, and some propane is taken off. Well, I too am over seventy years old, and if I were traveling on a 700 mile trip, I might have to stop somewhere along the line to be relieved of a little gas myself.
Ten seconds.
There you go.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. I appreciate you allowing me to speak today. My name is James Martinson, J A M E S, M A R T I N S E M. I was born, raised, and currently reside in national Wisconsin with my family. I want to make it clear that I have not invaded beer. I have not been busted from anywhere or other parts of the region. I'm local through and through. Like others in this room, I take pride in calling ash from my home. I can't imagine living anywhere else. As someone who has lived their entire life here, I know how heavy I will roll our lakes, rivers, and lands play in our daily lives. I myself am an avid outdoorsman, and outside of work, you can typically find me in the woods around the water. I recognize that this is a hot topic of debate we find ourselves in. The hard reality is that to maintain the quality of life we deserve and we rely on, we are consumers of oil and gas. The transportation of that oil and gas has led me here. It's ignorant to think that a high demand product will not get to market. Personally, like many others, we go for the soil and gas to be transported via pipeline, then using ships across our great lakes, railroads through our towns, or thousands more tractor trailers on our railways. We all know that there will never be 100% support of a pipeline project yet for this reroute. Enbridge has earned 100% landowner approval, which I think has nothing short of impressive. Nobody wants this spill to occur. I commend Enbridge's work to use the latest technology to greatly reduce the likelihood of that happening. Remember the thing that I've seen, Enbridge is a company that values safety, and will put a ball in the ground with Michaels. Use the line five reroute as a win-win for all key players. Enbridge gets to continue to move product that we need. The local community enjoys the economic benefit, and the tribal commissions get the pipeline off tribal lands. There's no question that in doing this, though, each party still makes sacrifices. I do believe this reroute is the best alternative than replacing the pipeline from its current path.
One minute.
The Army Corps' mission is to deliver vital engineering solutions in collaboration with our partners to secure nations, energize our economy, and reduce disaster risk. Granting this permit aligns with your mission. I have no doubt this project will be done safely and with the least environmental impact as possible. I ask you to approve the Enbridge permit and allow this project to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Anya Janßen, A N Y A, J A N S S E N. I'm a staff attorney with Midwest Environmental Advocates, a nonprofit environmental law firm based in Madison. Our message today can be distilled to one main point, and that is for the Army Corps to take responsibility. First, the Corps has a duty to protect the waters of the United States and must prohibit discharges that would cause unacceptable adverse impacts. As the EPA has already warned, Enbridge's proposed line five reroute would cause unacceptable adverse impacts. These would be neither minor nor temporary. At a minimum, the Corps must take responsibility and evaluate these impacts by conducting a full environmental impact statement. An adequate EIS will demonstrate the appropriate course of action here, and that is to deny the permit. Additionally, Enbridge plans to use horizontal directional drilling, the same construction method used on line three that caused aquifer breaches and frackouts. These outcomes are neither inadvertent nor unforeseeable, but rather are predictable and likely consequences. The Corps must take responsibility and independently evaluate the safety of these construction methods. Do not abdicate this responsibility to a foreign corporation that puts profit over the health of communities and natural resources, and that has a horrendous track record for environmental contamination and endangerment. Furthermore, the Army Corps has a federal trust responsibility to the Bad River Band of Lake Superior of Chippewa. EIA stands with the Bad River Band in opposition to Enbridge and the continued operation of this pipeline. Both the continued operation of line five and the proposed reroute threatens the band's treaty-protected natural resources. The Corps must honor its federal trust responsibility by denying Enbridge the permits to build a pipeline through the seated territory and within the Bad River watershed. Lastly, the Corps must take responsibility and consider the real possibility of a line five shutdown. There's an active shutdown order for the segment of line five that is trespassing across the Bad River Reservation. Yet, this is not considered by the Corps. To say the Corps has more authority over the fate of the existing pipeline is absurd. Simply put, if the Corps denies Enbridge the permits to reroute line five, Enbridge almost certainly will be forced to comply with the June 2026 deadline to shut down the existing pipeline. We therefore demand the Corps take responsibility by first adequately assessing the environmental impacts and thereby denying Enbridge these permits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Jim Durkey. I'm co-owner of, excuse me, J I M D U R K E. I'm co-owner of Stemp Yard Incorporated. We're located in Wesker, Michigan. I bought the business back in 2008, and a large segment of my, my business is from heat. I deliver diesel, gas, and in 2012, I got into propane. What was happening, I was losing a lot of my customers, diesel customers, fuel oil, to the propane industry because the changing of furnaces was expensive and with propane being a lot cheaper. So we got into propane, and I currently have roughly a thousand customers that use propane. In the twelve, or excuse me, thirteen, fourteen season, as I've been all, we had a propane shortage. Just getting into the business, I had a heck of a time trying to locate and find product. I ended up shipping product all the way from St. Louis, Missouri, to keep my customers with the heat and the propane that they needed for their life deal. So I'm strictly here to, you know, we need this pipeline. Propane comes from Junction City, Wisconsin, Superior, Wisconsin, and they just put a rail in. The issue is, I, as a very low usage customer compared to Marigaz, who uses a billion gallons of propane a year, they have access to it. For me, I have to find it a little bit here, a little bit there, and I have to have a backup because if I can't get the propane to service my customers, I go out of business and they lose their heat. So line five to me, to have the local, where we're not driving thousands of miles to pick up the product, get it here to use for our local economy is, we have to have, so shutting down one line, even in Duluth, Minnesota, they only have one line propane if you shut down Enbridge. And so I'm strictly here to help try and keep my customers and my business alive. I appreciate, thank you very much, and have a nice day.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
I'm Naomi Tolson, N A O M I T I L L I S O N, the Director of Washkezi Natural Resources Department with the Bad River Band of Lake Superior of Chippewa, in which for the time to speak today on Enbridge's proposal to construct a 41 mile oil pipeline. Enbridge is proposing this project because the current line five pipeline has been in trespass since 2013 on the Bad River Reservation. It failed to demonstrate changes to size, type, and location of its infrastructure at river crossings protecting people from floods, and failed to demonstrate protected fisheries and log raised waters. Our department's initial review of the Corps' draft combined decision document, or DCDD, indicates that relies on incomplete data and limited analysis. The DCDD continues to highlight issues with the piecemeal weight data that data has been submitted by the applicant and how this tampers the regulators and public's understanding of the impacts of the project. One example of this is the Corps using an older wetland and water body crossing table for their appendix 15, when a more up-to-date table is available on the Wisconsin DNR's website. A second example is discrepancies in mapping in GIS data sets showing project features in different areas. This makes the proposal unclear, making it difficult to understand the effects of the proposal. A more comprehensive evaluation of the effects of the proposal and alternatives analysis is needed. Alternatives exist that could result in less environmental damages and adverse effects on the environment, such as using other existing pipelines to transport the oil. Due to the nature of our region, pipeline construction poses huge risk to ecosystem. The proposal includes blasting around 7.8 miles, entrenching drilling and backfilling within and adjacent to hundreds of wetlands and streams and inter groundwater aquifers. After construction, there's the effects of inspecting and maintaining a pipeline, including the corridor and the numerous access routes. These effects do not, do not appear to be accounted for in the DCDB. We have firsthand experience on the reservation of how Corps citing decisions and how constructing and maintaining a pipeline can adversely affect the ecosystem, and how that combined with maintenance failures can set the stage for potential environmental disaster. We are learning about the cumulative health effects and resources effects of pipeline existence and operation. The Corps must take a harder look at impacts through an environmental impact statement, as the project will have significant direct and cumulative impacts to the fish creek and Bad River watersheds. The ecology, the band's treaty rights, which you'll hear from Chairman Blanchard about, it will impact our streams, rivers, and fisheries, and our groundwater aquifers that so many of us in the Chumkin Bay Area depend on for safe drinking water. The project will have significant and permanent impacts on our wetlands providing critical functions such as storing floodwaters, making us more resilient to future storms, and protecting downstream water quality. An EIS is warranted to more thoroughly evaluate the proposal and alternatives and the effects, including consideration of the band's downstream water quality standards.
Read it finish, please.
We encourage you to read Bad River's reports, the federal guidelines, and write comments. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Chad Zuliger, C H A D, Z U L G E R. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Dairy Business Association. The Dairy Business Association, or DDA, is a nonprofit organization of Wisconsin dairy farmers, milk processors, and allied business partners, working together to boost the state dairy community. DDA's members come from across the dairy spectrum, from farms of all sizes, to cheesemakers, to animal health companies, lenders, insurance providers, and more. I'm here today to lend a DDA's voice to those asking the US Army Corps of Engineers to approve the permits needed to move forward with the line five relocation project. Access to affordable, reliable energy is critical to every Wisconsin farmer. Line five has been an important piece of that energy infrastructure in our state and region for decades. The relocation project ensures that line five will remain operational for years to come, helping to meet the gasoline, diesel, and propane demands, both agricultural and non-agricultural uses. Line five plays a particularly important role in the regional propane supply, and propane is an essential energy source, energy source for just about every dairy farm in our state. Propane is often the only viable energy source to heat farmers' homes, livestock farms, and milking farms. It is even used to power some farm equipment. As you likely know and have already heard, the major propane supplier in the region, Plains Midstream, has said that it will close its propane facility in Superior in the Upper Peninsula of Michigan, creating a major void in the propane supply that will hurt not just farmers, but everyone who relies on propane for heat during our cold winters. Farmers are proud of their work to be good stewards of land and water resources, and DDA members are at the forefront of sustainable farming practices to ensure clean drinking water resources for all Wisconsin residents. That is why, when we look closely at the project details, we're glad to see the design by Enbridge reflects a mindful plan to mitigate or minimize the impacts on wetlands, water bodies, threatened and endangered species habitat, and archaeological and cultural resources, and other areas that may impact the health and vitality of land and water resourcing within our area. In fact, the draft decision document released by the Army Corps states that the least environmentally damaging practical alternative is the route Enbridge has proposed. This permit application has been under consideration for years now. Numerous route deviations and wetland crossing alternatives have been thoroughly analyzed, and I request that you quickly move forward with a final decision so this critical energy infrastructure can continue to operate and provide much needed energy and certainty to Wisconsin dairy farmers. Thank you for your time today. On behalf of Wisconsin dairy farmers, I respectfully ask you to approve Enbridge's permit application and allow the line five project to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good morning. I'm Brad Olson, B R A D O L S O N, President of the Wisconsin Farm Bureau. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak on my pipeline's benefit, Wisconsin agriculture. Farming in Wisconsin is a risky and challenging industry. Every day, there are many unpredictable variables that impact farmers across the state. What cannot be unpredictable for farmers is how they get the necessary fuel to support and run their farms. Without the crude oil and natural gas being transported by line five, farmers across Wisconsin will be left with an uncontrollable situation. Will they, will they be able to secure enough fuel when it is time to plant or harvest? Will there be a consistent supply of natural gas for drying grain in the fall? How will fuel be transported to rural farms to maintain the necessary environments? Right now, farmers can depend on the fuel transported on line five, especially in rural Wisconsin. In many rural areas across the country, access to natural gas and crude oil can be limited and inconsistent. The line five pipeline ensures that these essential commodities are delivered safely and steadily, supporting both rural residential and local business needs. Additionally, line five contributes to lower energy Additionally, Line 5 contributes to lower energy costs by providing direct and efficient route for fuel. This helps reduce transportation costs, which in turn lowers energy prices, which is particularly important in rural areas where energy costs can be a significant portion of household expenses. Pipelines also have a smaller environmental footprint compared to other transportations like trucking or rail. They reduce the number of heavy vehicles in areas in Wisconsin where the road infrastructure is unable to handle the increased demand and volume. They also decrease traffic congestion, lower accident threat, minimize overall road wear and tear. This not only makes travel safer for residents, but also reduces maintenance costs for local governments on roads. Transporting fuel through the Line 5 pipeline is essential for agriculture and rural communities.
One minute.
This pipeline is an inevitable asset to farming offering a reliable, efficient, and sustainable solution to transporting the fuel essential for operating. It is also critical to rural Wisconsin by providing these areas with lower energy costs. Wisconsin Farm Bureau encourages the Army Corps of Engineers to approve Line 5 pipeline relocation projects so that farming in rural Wisconsin can continue to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Thank you. My name is Ron Spurle, R.O.N.S.P.O.E.R.L. I'm a tribal member from the Little River Band of Atlanteans. I'm not speaking on behalf of my tribe, but I have a unique perspective here. As CEO, President of Quark Industries, based out of Sundown, Wisconsin, we're able to view the Line 5 relocation project from both a native perspective and an economic standpoint. As I will detail in testimony, I believe that the Line 5 relocation, which should be approved because it removes the pipeline from Bad Rivers Tribe's reservation, provides our state and region jobs and energy that we need. Let me start by saying I support transitioning to green energy. As a member of my tribe, I share a connection to the earth, protect our waters and our land. We have a duty to look after and support it, working towards technologies to better care for our mother earth. I also understand we cannot pull the energy rug away from our tribe, our friends, and our neighbors. We cannot overnight expect families who are struggling today to put food on our table, to purchase an expensive electric vehicle or expensive geothermal system. We are not ready. We need to invest in and develop green solutions, but this transition will take time. We must care for one another through this transition. This all leads to the Line 5 relocation project, which was proposed because the Bad River Tribe requested Enbridge remove a 12-mile segment of the existing Line 5 pipeline from its tribal lands. Out of respect of the tribe's request, Enbridge has proposed a 40-mile reroute we are in, we are here today to discuss. Not only has Enbridge respectfully engaged with the Native American leadership and business owners, including myself, while selecting the least impactful, impact, the least impactful route to the environment for this project, but 100% of the landowners along the reroute have agreed to host the Line 5 pipeline. If this project is not approved, everyone, including our native brothers and our sisters, communities around us, will suffer. Removing the product that flows through Line 5 will not only increase gas and diesel prices, but it will lead to massive propane price spikes and shortages. That's propane that heats thousands of homes in northern Wisconsin, including many on the Bad River Reservation and our tribes and communities around us. I will end by saying that I assume everyone here today supports alternative energy, and all Enbridge does, and working towards a society with reduced emissions. However, most of us understand it will not happen overnight. In the meantime, Wisconsin families and small businesses will continue to rely on the products and energy made possible by pipelines such as Line 5. For these reasons, I support the Enbridge Line 5 relocation project and encourage you to approve this project without further delay.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Scott Suter, S.E.S.C.O.T.T., S.U.D.E.R. I serve as the President of the Wisconsin Paper Council. The Wisconsin Paper Council is the premier trade association which represents and advocates for Wisconsin's paper, pulp, and forestry industries. The papermaking industry is a key economic driver for our state, employing over 30,000 highly skilled men and women, whose efforts continue to make us the number-one papermaking state throughout the United States. Our industry is dedicated to global sustainability and strong environmental stewardship of our forests and our natural resources. Our nonpartisan statewide trade association strongly supports the reroute of Line 5, which aligns with our values of maintaining and protecting the environment. As we look through the lens of sound forestry practices, we want to commend and support the efforts that Enbridge is taking as part of their pipeline construction process. The route minimizes impact-sensitive environmental areas of concern, as well as cultural resources in the area. The project itself is being developed in a manner that will minimize wetland, water body, threatened and endangered species, and archaeological and cultural resource impacts. We applaud Enbridge for their thoughtful approach to construction management planning in sensitive areas. In addition, their plans go beyond regulatory requirements and considerations with respect to the potential impacts placed on wetlands and watersheds within the construction framework. Enbridge has detailed assessments and plans in place for the conversion of select forested wetland habitats to emergent habitats, as well as maintaining overall wetland functions and values, and the compensatory mitigation for both temporary and permanent wetland impacts. As you may know, the production of paper products is a highly intensive energy process. To stop Line 5, a vital source of energy for the entire region and the state, would be harmful for our members, the over 30,000 men and women we employ, as well as our entire industry supply chain. Wisconsin businesses and manufacturers depend on reliable and affordable energy to create jobs and produce the goods and services our states, the state needs to grow and thrive.
One minute, sir.
The continued operation of Line 5 is the safest and most efficient way to continue to move energy throughout our entire region and the energy that our economy needs to fuel our progress. Approving this project will help ensure reliable, predictable, and affordable energy resource our members will rely on every single day. Thank you so much for the opportunity to participate in this important process today.
Thank you. Let me say something. We're going to take a break here in a second. The Colonel will announce it, and Senator Quinn will speak first, and then you'll be next.
Oh, forget all my things.
Okay, everybody in line, you stand there for five minutes or go away and come back in the same position.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we'll take a five-minute break and resume at 12:05.
You see, I'm a big son. I'm a boy. I'm a boy. I'm a little bit smaller than you. I'm a little bit smaller. Okay, good, thank you. I'm a little bit smaller. 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 I'm a little bit smaller.
Want to stay on time? Okay, so we're going to have Senator Quinn be the first speaker. Okay. I was correct, I mentioned earlier it's going to go to nine o'clock. I am so sorry, it's only to eight o'clock. I apologize. Okay. Okay, we get started? Timer, you ready, sir? Okay.
Awesome, great. Good afternoon. My name is Senator Romaine Quinn, and I have the privilege of representing the 25th State Senate District, which encompasses the proposed reroute of Line 5. The 25th Senate District is very diverse in terms of our economy and our culture, and especially our political opinions. That is why I try my best as Senator to focus on issues and solutions that benefit the greater community as a whole, and that's something that we can hopefully build consensus on. That is why I'm here today in support of Line 5's reroute project. I'd like to share a couple reasons why. The $450 million investment into this infrastructure project is an important shot in the arm for our local and state economy. The state of Wisconsin is expected to net an additional $6.5 million in new tax revenue. The additional money to our general fund is almost the exact amount myself and Representative Green and Sappick, who will meet today, secured in the last budget for upgrades to our fish hatcheries in Bayfield and Drewell, a new investment in Amicon Falls and Patterson State Park. Unfortunately, that money was vetoed, but we made a priority again next budget cycle. At a local level, the small businesses in our area that will be needed to sustain the workers while they move through our district will get a much-needed economic boost, especially coming off of a hard winter. Additional sales tax collection from the service industry will also directly benefit our area counties to pay for the services that we all need and expect here in northern Wisconsin. As one of only a handful of northern Wisconsin senators, it is a constant struggle to get the necessary infrastructure investment we need in the north. If this project is not approved, the thought of an additional 2,100 trucks on our roads to all petroleum products is terrifying to me. Not only is this a public safety issue, we simply do not have the money to support this increased truck traffic on our infrastructure. We just don't. It is important to remember that eliminating one mode of transportation for petroleum products, such as a pipeline, does not actually decrease the demand for the product or stop the usage. All we would be doing is making it more expensive and less safe to move the product.
One minute, sir.
And for a final comment, I would also like to point out the potential impact on our propane supplies. By shutting down Line 5, we will absolutely be disrupting our current propane market. Propane markets in and around the state of Wisconsin have a direct impact on the prices that we pay here. From residents like myself, who heat our homes with propane, to our farmers that use it to dry their crops, we can't afford any disruptions. As our farmers and families continue to deal with the constant pain of inflation on their budgets, why would we risk throwing a wrench into our energy market? Thank you for allowing me to testify today in support of the reroute project. Thank you to everyone who that is here today, making your opinion heard, whether you are for or against the project. While the transition to renewable energy is in full swing, we still need reliable and affordable energy, along with safe infrastructure today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks.
Good afternoon. My name is Pat Nemec, N.E.M.E.C. I'm a co-owner of a company, L1 Services. I've born and raised in Aspen for 50-plus years, I want to give the exact age, and I'm a Bad River Tribal member. You probably read and heard that they say that the Bad River members don't want this. I know quite a few that are for this, they're afraid to speak. As a business owner, I know a lot of businesses that are for this, but they're afraid to speak because they're afraid of affecting businesses. I believe, I understand the side, the other side, they want it, and I wish they would understand why other people want it that way. You guys have a tough decision because you gotta decide what's right for people, what's the best interest. And I think by doing Line 5 reroute is the best thing for everybody overall. So, when you're sitting there deciding what way to go, what's the best interest for every, for the majority? Is it going to make some people mad? Is it going to make some people happy? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Um, good afternoon. I'm a member of Anishinaabe and M'wenn. Renan Goodrich, um, Yavna Shimana. Last good evening, land to Chibwa. Greetings, everyone. My name is Renan Goodrich. I'm here representing multiple treaty nations here, the women's indigenous network here, and I wanted to share some of our concerns that we have. Currently, I'm working with Native Lives Matter Coalition of the Great Lakes, from Chinmigledge. Enbridge says it's done an appropriate economic evaluation, so I wanted to speak a little bit about the economic evaluations and, and some of the talking, some of the main points that I have here. Is, Enbridge says it's done an appropriate economic evaluation and has determined that the reroute is economically viable and needed in the marketplace. However, the only point engineers shouldn't take, Enbridge, Enbridge has worked for it. The Corps has made incorrect assumptions about market demands for fossil fuel. The PGL, PLG consultant and impartial energy industry consultant released documents, reports of ranging replacement options for, for Line 5 that are both commercially and more valuable and operationally feasible. Enbridge has a dangerous, has been dangerously pumping oil to the northern Wisconsin illegally and trespass, violating the Bad Rivers Band sovereignty for more than 10 years. Now, Enbridge is trying to expand the pipeline and operate it for years to come, putting at risk the water, local communities, fish, and so much more with the threat of an oil spill. This reroute is not a solution. Line 5 carries 23 million gallons of crude oil each day and will continue to threaten the entire region. And Enbridge's own analysis found that if Line 5 is shut down, gas prices would go up by less than a penny. The Army Corps should consider the marginalized, the marginal reductions in green gas emissions for each alternative, including the fact that a shutdown would likely result in the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions over time, which several studies do support. The Corps doesn't explain any cost, any cost into the reservation leads to greater, also leads to greater impacts of environmental impacts.
Ma'am, I have to cut you off on this three minutes.
Three minutes, sir?
Yes, very fast, thank you.
Okay. Three minutes, what?
You can put your, anything you want to write in outside of this. Next speaker.
All right. My name is Tara Stangler, spelled T-A-R-A-H-S-T-A-N-G-L-E-R. I'm speaking out only to the Army Corps of Engineers, but everybody here that is listening, and I want to remind you that they are relying to you, but you already know that. Similarly, Keystown Pipeline, they promised 119,000 jobs post-construction, that was 35. These are not sustainable jobs. They will go away once the pipeline is completed, leaving insertion for work. Since Line 5 was created in 1953, it has leaked at least a reported 1.1 million gallons of oil into the waterways. 1.1 million gallons. Adding 41 miles increases the amount of possibility for leaks, but wasting gas and oil doesn't really seem to be a big deal to Enbridge, considering the various fleets of F-250s that drove up here. I want to remind everybody that waterways are all connected, this will destroy our lives, but I'm not a scientist. The last science class I took was wrong for jobs in college. I can't say much, but I can say what I learned there taught me that this is wrong. I can speak to something very important, and I want to talk about the impacts of police brutality that are about to come and rock this community and everybody that participates in any kind of action against this. In 2018, the Northern Lights Task Force was created to, and I quote, "coordinate playing resources in response to the Enbridge Pipeline and Re-Replacement Project." This task force was formed as a result of presentations put on by police departments in North Dakota who brutalized water protectors during the Dappel Frontiers. Brutalization that included spraying protesters with water in below freezing temperatures, mass arrests, targeting journalists, and the use of last-minute lethal munitions known to cause severe amounts of damage to people. I witnessed this firsthand. Throughout the summer of 2021, we watched the same task force brutalize protesters, police departments from all across Minnesota, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with, being the St. Paul District.
One minute, ma'am.
Allowing this pipeline means you are allowing police brutality every week, less than lethal around that pierce of skin when you pull blood on the floor will be your fault. You will be responsible. You will be responsible for every grandmother who has bones broken and pain compliance hold. You will be responsible for it. If they kill someone, you will have to know that is on your conscience, every person that is looking into the camera as they are brutalized, that the police are looking at you because you had every power to stop it and you chose not to. You chose to allow them to, or to pollute our waters, to brutalize our people, and to decide that this is what's more important to you. You have a choice.
Thank, thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Neil Sikkich, N.E.I.L.S.I.C.K.I.C.H. I am business agent of Steamfitter Local 601, resident of Wisconsin Northwoods. I'm here to register my voice in favor of Line 5 relocation project. Line 5 relocation project to employ 700 union workers from pipe trades, laborers, operating engineers, and teachers. I firmly believe these highly skilled men and women are best at what they do on the entire planet. Take pride in our work and call Wisconsin our home. Many of us are outdoor, outdoors men and women who fish, hunt, camp, hike along these very rivers and lakes that we will be talking about today. Construct a safe pipeline because we have received the best train to do so and because we call this our home. As a lifelong steamfitter and business agent of Wisconsin Union that represents the Union Pipeline Wellness pipeline wellers in our state, I want to address a claim we continue to hear concerning the jobs associated with the project. Those that plan these are temporary jobs are completely, completely wrong. Pipeline workers, including our welders, spend years learning and mastering their trade. They have careers in the industry and have families sustaining wages and benefits. These are anything but temporary jobs. In addition to my professional role with Steamfitter Local 601, I am a resident of northern Wisconsin. In fact, I live down the road from here and a family member of mine has agreed to have the Line 5 relocation run through their property. So this is just not a professional matter for me. It's personal. While I do not expect those who live in the cities to understand propane as literally a matter of life or death for hundreds of thousands of Wisconsinites. Without propane in our tanks, we have no ability to heat our homes. Line 5 is an important part, important part of the propane supply chain moving natural gas liquids, needing to provide a large proportion of our regional propane supply. As a major propane supplier has already warned, should the relocation project not move forward and should Line be shut down, our entire region will see crippling propane price hikes and major supply issues. These are real concerns impacting real people trying to keep their families warm during the cold winters. In summary, it is my personal and professional belief that Line 5 relocation project is not wholly needed, but will be a huge win for our state's residents and workers. I ask that the U.S. Army Corps promptly issues Embridge's commitments to complete this vital project. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce the next speaker to Bad River, Bad River of the Lake Superior Triple One Chairman, Robert Ondry.
Thank you. Thank you, Roger. My name is Robert Ondry, Chairman of the Bad River Lake Superior Triple Islands. My, my, my spirit name is Amiyoogima Gundawa Ogimamizi, which was given to me by my elders. I come before you today to voice the Bad River ban stand under those Embridge Line 5 reroute. I know I only have a few minutes to speak in the presence of our lands in an effort for their protection. These lands are not ours, they are to lose by our grandfathers and our grandmothers, lands we bore from our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren. It is easy to be known as many, many as Bad River, to know by elders and pass on down to my people as Medicine River. A place where wild rice grows and medicinal medicines grow, a place where we hunt and fish for past hundreds if not thousands of years to feed our, and heal our families. I must collect, I must self-collect medicines for my family and healing from watershed to Bad River. The White River upstream might define that help me with western medicine had little or no effect on my site. My grandfather used this for his site and passed on to me so I can pass it on to my children, and my grandchildren. It's a plant that interconnects with water, aquatic species, and other plants. I've used many other medicines gathered from the Bad River watershed, not just for myself, but for my relatives that need and want the medicine. Everything on this planet are the spirit. The animals, the water, the plant life, even the grass we walk on, it's the spirit. We have spirit. We must treat and respect these spirits so that, to destroy them so that we may all, in my language, we know the modus operandi. It's a, it's an interconnection that is missed in misidentification of wetlands or simply missing information. This is an example why I am encouraging people to come in, to the Army Corps District Office of State Guard, look at it, when it's through the environmental impact statement and added retirement to our mother earth deserves. I encourage people to read the regulations governing the 404 permits. I encourage people to find out specific, significant impacts for the Corps to review with an environmental impact statement. The Bad River watershed extended beyond our borders of the reservation. The Line 5 reroute was proposed, run adjacent two tribal lands within ceded territories of the Indian Boe nations, Wisconsin, within Bad River watershed. So you see converting wetlands, spilling rocks, removing tree cover, and any punctured saplings or fractured building returns. Those during the line frequent shopping for oil and oil spill will in best will effectively, adversely affect our treaty protective rights to hunt, fish, gather from these lands and the waterways for many, many years to come.
Sure, Mr. Speaker. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Sister Rosalyn Heil. I live here in Ashland. I'm a Franciscan sister who worked for the National Park Service for 20 years as an interpretive ranger. I soon found in that work the best way to speak of the sacredness of the land of the national parks was to learn about how the first people lived on that land. I am speaking for the web of life. Digging up land, displacing land, plants, animals, people, moving wetlands. Biologists still do not know how to really redo a wetland. Earth has been at it for thousands and thousands of years. We haven't learned it yet. I don't know how to, we are called to respect our home. Our home is the land, the water. Everything is connected. This, it is a web of life, and when you cut out one strand, you affect the whole. All earth is interconnected. When one part is poisoned, it affects the whole. When a toe or finger isn't infected, the whole body is sick. We must not disrupt the ecosystem of this land. This land that is home for plants, trees, animals, our indigenous brothers and sisters, they are all our brothers and sisters. There are many alternatives to heating besides oil. We have become addicted to oil as the only way for a comfortable life. There are alternatives. We need the will to do it. The Embridge contract expired in 2013. They have not respected that contract. They have not respected their agreement in this land acquisition for the pipeline. If they can't accept that, if they can't respect that, how can we trust their work and their research that says this is safe? We must look for alternatives. We must use our willpower to find alternative ways for heat and comfort for our lives, our children, our grandchildren, down the seven generations. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Ann, A-N-N-O-E, Rosenquist. I'm Swedish. I wish I was named American, but I'm not, and I stand for Bad River. I live up in Bayfield. I'm an organic farmer. I'm outside all day long, sunup, sundown, working, and this is not a good time for a hearing. This is one we're planting. We've had a tough winter. It was 30 degrees more than it usually is. The Arctic is melting. The glaciers are melting. We don't have much time on this planet. I mean, why are we doing stuff like this? It doesn't make any sense. I leave them wood. I drive a Geo Metro that gets 50 miles per gallon because no current vehicles get that kind of mileage. I have, I'm totally off-grid, so we have the sun and the wind even with the farm, so we're able to run like five freezers in the middle of the summer, which is kind of a lot of energy, and we're not tied at all to the grid. And we don't need, you know, propane to heat because we have wood. I just, I, I just don't understand, if you look at the map and you look at all those watersheds where this reroute is going to go, and along the whole section, there are so many rivers and so many watersheds, and if you've ever witnessed how they drill down and, oh, oops, you know, they, they bring up fracking stuff or whatever, it's, it's not, it's not a good thing. And it's, and if you've ever seen some of the areas along here, it's the most pristine part of the entire United States. It's a, it's a beautiful area. Our Lake, Lake Superior is one of the cleanest ever, even though, you know, we have pipas coming down on us, and we have microplastics and everything, but at least we are cleaner than most of the rest of the United States. Let's preserve this. If they maybe dig up the entire pipeline, because it is 71 years old, and if you dug it up and got rid of it, there would be many, many jobs. Thank you.
Please, could you spell your last name?
Well, we say, Chris. Aren't we asking you? Are you giving my last name?
Next speaker, please.
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jill Ferguson, F-E-R-G-U-S-O-N. I'm better known to most people in this room as badass grandma. I'm a water protector from Line 3, arrested three times, three times seriously injured for protecting the water, for protecting the Mississippi. I ask myself every day, what country am I in now? I'm 71, the same age as this pipeline, and I know how I feel at 71. So that pipeline should not be operational, should be shut down. It should not, there should not be models of pipeline added to it. So I have a lot of questions, I have a lot of concerns. You all know, as well as we know, that, that your report is nonsense. It's flawed, it's incomplete, it's lies, it's all based on Embridge propaganda. Lots of colored brochures here, lots, "Embridge Safety 24/7/365." No, you're not. I know some, some of my friends here who walk the line, who, who go out in canoes to look for it. You don't find it, they find it, and they report on it. In fact, Embridge had, had a spill in Fort Atkins in Wisconsin. This, you know, somehow, you know, people don't even talk about that one, and for, and for over a year, they left it unreported. This, this company is not safe. They have an abysmal history. I have pages and pages and documented pages. These are all lawsuits for Embridge and for Michaels. They have an abysmal environmental record. They are reckless, they couldn't care less what they do to the environment, to people or planet. I also want to know why, from top to bottom, from our president, right down, down the line, we are behaving in a Canada-first position. This, this pipeline goes, it comes from Canada, to Canada, for Canada. Wisconsin doesn't get any of this product. Why are we willing to take the 100% of the risk? What are you all getting in exchange for that? Because it doesn't register anywhere in my brain that you would allow this. Water, fresh water is a non-renewable resource that most of the world would give anything to have. What's going to happen when, when, when we, when we, when we pollute that? And it's going to happen. Look at Waukesha. I don't know how many of you know about Waukesha, I'm from Milwaukee. They just got done taking, making pipeline from Michigan out to, you know, 30 miles to Waukesha because they destroyed their fresh water. What is everybody else going to do? So I just want to say, this is not worth, it, it is not worth, it is not worth the risk. This should be shut down. Why in the world you even bothered to take almost three years to go through this process is, is, is absolutely beyond me. And, and you're taking a gamble with water, you've made water a commodity, and you're all part of that. You're all part of that. So when your kids and your grandkids come to you and, and say, where were you? What did you do? Did you do anything to stop it? Which cycle you're on? Because we're on sides. Because one of us is on sides.
We're going to broach, so we'll give you one more minute, please.
Sure, fine. And, and to those of you who, who are, who are pro, this pipeline, I don't know how or, or why, except for money. Because it makes no sense whatsoever, because it is, water is life, is not a hashtag, it's a fact. It's a fact for everything. And I know the indigenous people who sold out, you know, I've been hanging along with a lot of my indigenous friends for many, many years now, and I keep hearing the statement, you know, be in a good way, be in a good way. You call this be in a good way?
Ma'am, I need you to finish, please.
You, I mean.
I've got one, three minutes, but, sorry. Please finish, I'll go clear.
Okay, so again, I, I want to know why we are going by this 1977 treaty, which allows an unobstructed access to our pristine land. Why are we doing that? That makes no sense. It makes no sense, none whatsoever. And, you know, I, I, my taxes go to pay y'all salaries. You know, Canada doesn't pay your salaries, and once you get it under the table, then we'll go like envelope or stock or something.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sure. Last thing I want to see here is one of these signs.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Yep.
Next speaker.
My name is Russell Bennett, R-U-S-E-L-L-E-N-E-T. I'm here because I have 35 years of experience working as a registered nurse in community mental health, and I successfully helped unionize our workplace. There is a deep and growing despair about our climate future, with numerous studies to back this up. One example is a survey of 10,000 people ages 16 to 25. They found that three-quarters of those surveyed thought the future regarding climate was frightening. Over half think that humanity is doomed. These young people feel betrayed, they feel ignored and abandoned by politicians, they feel bewildered by the government's failure to act. All of this is not even to, not even taking into account the mental health effects of any specific coming weather events, and it doesn't touch on the massive physical health costs of climate chaos. Dr. Jonathan Pats of the University of Wisconsin has clearly documented the health costs of our current fossil fuel economy, as well as the profound health effects and financial savings that would ensue from moving away from such an economy. I can imagine that some of you might say that it's not within the purview of your agency to address such concerns. But for the Corps to ignore the big picture, to hew to something like we've always done it this way, would be the equivalent of this agency merely rearranging the deck chairs on the ecological Titanic. The test before us now is for all of us to acknowledge the big picture, to acknowledge the urgency, then act accordingly, as we face an epic disaster unlike any other in human history. Dr. Martin Luther King said, quote, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." Here's to hoping the Corps rises to the occasion and does its part in not looking away from the big picture. That you make a decision regarding Line 5 that does right by all those to come, those who did nothing to create this problem but have everything to lose.
One minute. Moving hope. Thank you. I'll let me finish out here in a minute. I'm done. Okay. Right, man.
My name is Laura Briidell, L-A-U-R-A-B-R-I-D-E-L-L. Thank you for hearing comments today. People rarely think about pipelines. They run quietly underground, they operate 24 hours a day. The product pipelines and transport is essential to how people heat homes and businesses. If the product isn't moved in pipeline systems, it finds other ways to move, such as rail and truck. Moving energy this way is far more impactful to local residents and carries a higher risk of environmental impacts. Embridge has been in Wisconsin for 75 years, operating this critical infrastructure. This route has been very thoroughly surveyed and selected with the purpose of avoiding sensitive resources and areas. Its design has been mindfully planned with respect to impacts on wetlands and water bodies. The project will not only be an improvement in environmental impact, it will be a great economic boost. This is a $450 million privately funded project with a Wisconsin-based general contractor and 700 family-sustaining union construction jobs. Embridge has also made a commitment that 10% of the project budget is spent specifically with native-owned businesses, including hiring and training tribal members. This reroute, reroute project is needed, and I encourage you to continue this process forward so that this can be built. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. My name is Meg Paulino, M-E-G-P-A-U-L-I-N-O. Today I stand here as an archivist and heritage curator for the Franciscan Sisters of Perpetual Adoration. I also stand as a mother and grandmother. I have had a unique experience serving our military as a transportation officer. In that role, I was assigned the role to be the hazmat, which is the hazardous materials handler for my position, so I have worked in this field. My proposal through this, through the pipeline, is I just, I feel that after my families decided to settle here, this was our last place that we got, we got to stay at, so we love Wisconsin, and we decided to stay in this area. So we love Wisconsin, and we decided to stay in this area. The proposal of this pipeline through Wisconsin Waterways is not just a matter of economics, it's not just a matter of convenience. It's a dire threat to our way of life. As someone who has witnessed catastrophic consequences of environmental disasters, I can attest to the grave risks of such a pipeline. When a railcar or a tractor trailer goes over, the, the damage is contained. When a pipeline has an issue, it continues and can go for years before its discovery. The damage is much more important. An oil, an oil spill in these delicate ecosystems would be nothing short of an ecological apocalypse, decimating wildlife, poisoning our water supply, and irreparably harming the flora and the fauna, as well as the well-being of each individual person. I know too well the immense challenges and the costs that are associated with cleaning up such a disaster. And often, way too often, the damage is irreversible.
One minute, ma'am.
Furthermore, the construction and operation of this pipeline would only exacerbate the climate crisis that we are currently facing. We cannot continue to rely on fossil fuels. Instead of investing in outdated and harmful infrastructure, we should prioritize our renewable energy sources that are sustainable, clean, and safe for the planet, safe for future generations. Let us not sacrifice the health of our environment and our communities for short-term gains. I urge you to join the understanding against proposed pipeline and advocate it for a future that prioritizes environmental stewardship and the well-being of all living things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, uh, my name's Pete Rasmusen, P E T E R A S M U S S E N. I live in Marengo, Wisconsin. I live just south of here. Proposed dream pipeline would go across Silver Creek just up from my house. Um, I think that this hearing is, in a lot of ways, absurd because a company like Enbridge really shouldn't be trusted at, at all. I wonder how, with them trespassing through my neighbor Bad Rivers land for years and years on end, where if I were trespassing on anybody's land for years and years and years, a sheriff would certainly, probably at some point lock me up, but these guys get to keep doing it, and you guys get to entertain them rerouting a pipeline to an ancient old pipeline. You've watched them breach aquifers in Minnesota within the last few years, and then are gonna depend on their data about aquifers in my area? We live in a freshwater stronghold. We have artesian wells bubbling up a mile from my house that I know you guys don't understand. And I know that that hydrology is not understood by anybody. And so you guys are responsible for that. And so if you let Enbridge do this, knowing that they're vagrant, vagrant lawbreakers, they're responsible for the largest oil spill of a pipeline in the United States. They are a Canadian company, taking Canadian oil from Canada to Canada through my backyard. And I'm gonna protect my backyard. And as far as horizontal drilling goes, nobody regulates it. So while you guys get to regulate the White River, the hundred of other horizontal drills that they're gonna do, nobody regulates. The DNR doesn't do it because they regulate stream beds. You guys don't do it because you only deal with the section of the White River. So that's left it up to me and my neighbors to protect ourselves. Because by the very nature of you guys entertaining this, it shows me that, that the decision is made. I mean, it should be laughed out of the, you should, you know, it should just be like, you're gonna do what? You're gonna hook up a new line to a 70-year-old line that was supposed to be retired 50 years ago from a company that we can't trust? Please do the right thing and deny this.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Cordey, C O R D Y, S T A R R. I serve as the international representative for the Labor's International Union in North America. Wyoming has 550,000 members between the United States and Canada. Members of our union have extensive experience working on critical infrastructures like your proposed line five relocation project. Our union has a strong relationship with Michaels and has been selected, that has been selected as the mainline construction contractor for the $450 million project. The project labor agreement has been signed by my union, as well as the International Union of Operating Engineers, International Brotherhood of Teamsters, and the United Association of Plumbers and Bidders. The economic impact on this project will be massive and will result in 700 great paying union jobs. Our job, these jobs employ local Wisconsin workers who will take the paychecks they earn and spend them in their own communities. This will, will create an added benefit for local businesses and residents throughout Northern Wisconsin. The Wisconsin Laborers are engaged with community-based organizations and other partners who work with historically underserved communities. And this project will invest significant resources to work with native-owned business, including training and hiring of tribal members to work on this project. My union and other unions who will be working on this project all have world-class skills and safety training that will help ensure this complicated project will be done safely while protecting Wisconsin waterways and natural resources, while also guaranteeing that Northern Wisconsin has access to fuel to heat our homes and businesses.
One minute, sir.
This project will have a massive impact for current and future members of my union. Ensure that we have safe and steady supply of energy, and I would like to thank the Corps engineers for the opportunity to speak. That's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Eric Sorensen, E R I C, S O R E N S E N. American author Ambrose Pierce defined the corporation as "an ingenious device for acquiring individual profit without individual responsibility." Enbridge, with their many shell corporations and false fronts, is the embodiment of this definition, but their narrow focus to keep profits flowing daily. They chose to deal with American governments rather than their own Canadian authorities because they see us as more compliant. They do campaign contributions here and there, spread some money to cash-start communities, literally a drop in the pipeline of profits flowing through line five. We're not sure to talk about that. We will hear much stuff tomorrow about the safety and efficiency of pipelines, but certainly the Corps understands that there is not a single plan in place for removing them, as if they are now a permanent part of our landscape, and removing them is an S E P, somebody else's problem. We're not here to talk about that. Enbridge is leased to use the sovereign nation of Bad River Tribe, but it should not be expired years ago. Yet they have continued to operate illegally since that time, ignoring federal court orders to decommission the pipeline, as well as the order from the state government of Michigan to remove line five from the vulnerable Mackinac Straits. Having lost in the courts, their strategy is to delay for as long as they can keep the profits flowing. But we're not here to talk about that. They suggested reroute for line five runs through a portion of the Pinocchio Hills, which was hit with a thousand-year flood eight years ago and a 500-year flood two years ago. Perhaps Noah needs to recalibrate him. It crosses innumerable streams and rivers, including Brunswick, portions of which are designated wild and scenic. As the Corps described in your report on the attempted iron mine, the Pinocches are riven with springs and seams of groundwater, and any attempts to install a pipeline under these waters would cause irreparable harm to pristine trout hatcheries.
One minute, sir.
But we're not here to talk about that. We sit on the shores of the greatest body of fresh water on our continent. Those of us who reside in the basin breathe the water vapor, and carry the lake in our bodies. We are all connected to the lake and to each other. This pipeline poses an inevitable, unacceptable threat to the waters of Lake Superior when it's too close. It should never have been built in the first place, it is operating illegally. There are threats of breach as we speak, and the sooner you can issue a finding that will result in this foreign monstrosity being shut down and removed, the better we will breathe until the next attempted assault on our home.
Thank you.
No dollars for water.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Cheryl Lytle, C E R Y L, L Y T L E. I'm the executive director of the Wisconsin Propane Gas Association. We understand the, the concerns raised by those who oppose by line five, but with a 99.9% safety record, I feel the bigger picture to consider is the broader implications of shutting down this critical infrastructure. Propane supply in Wisconsin and the greater Midwest region is already balanced on a very delicate scale. The removal of line five would severely disrupt the balance, leading to significant consequences. The pipeline is a vital artery in transportation of propane, and it would close, and its closure would jeopardize the energy and security of 280,000 homes, businesses, farms that rely on this resource, especially during our harsh winter months. Line five is subject to stringent safety protocols and continuous monitoring to minimize environmental risks. Ongoing efforts to upgrade and maintain a pipeline ensures that it operates safely. Line five plays an indispensable role in ensuring stability and reliability of energy in Wisconsin. I understand it would take over 90 transports an hour to cover the supply that comes through line five. This alternative not only higher carbon footprint, but also increases the risk of accidents and spills. Interruptions of this supply would lead to higher energy costs, placing the financial burdens on those who use propane. Moreover, during the peak winter, the manure in the winter months, shortages could leave homes without heat, risking the health and safety of Wisconsinites. MISO, Mid-Continent Independent Supply Operator, reports that the electrical grid in the Midwest and throughout the central United States is at a high-risk status. Without propane, we would be putting more energy demand onto the grid with additional detrimental results.
One minute.
By keeping line five, we can continue to ensure that our communities are accessible to stable and reliable energy source. It is essential for maintaining the quality of life, especially in rural areas where alternatives are limited. There's a peace of mind that comes from knowing that there's secure supply of propane, and that cannot be overstated. It allows our families to stay warm, businesses operate smoothly, and our farmers to keep their livestock warm, crops dry, and equipment running. Please save line five. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
I am Jane Comel, J A N E C O M E A U. And I am here today with my colleagues from the Franciscan Sisters of Perpetual Adoration, my employer headquartered in Wisconsin. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am asking you to oppose Enbridge's line five permit. We can only have a healthy home with clean water and clean air. We can only have a future with land that is sustainable to live on. We can't live for now and disregard the future. We have the technology to heat our homes and schools. We need to think about future generations and families. We are an intergenerational group gathered here today. Let's own our responsibility to share our resources with our children's children and their children and their children. The proposed expansion is not a solution, but a distraction. It diverts attention from the fundamental issue. We should be transitioning away from fossil fuels, not investing in infrastructure that locks us into decades more of their use. As a lover of Wisconsin's wild places, many that I've hiked with my children, let's prioritize the protection of our natural resources. We have one Lake Superior, let's protect her. Thank you for listening. I hope you'll consider these points and do good work for the common good. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Deanna Beckles, D B N A, E A K L E S. I'm with the Wisconsin Network for Peace and Justice. There comes a time when clear-thinking people must admit that the course of exploitation and usury is no longer viable. And when those people come to that conclusion, it's vital to ensure a change of course that is just, equitable, and sound. Make no mistake, that's why so many of us are here, for our writing to you, and our resistance is growing and will continue to grow. Both the current line five and the proposed line five expansion pose potential threats to drinking water and ecosystems, both violate tribal rights. Line five is operating nearly 20 years past its life span, and we know the Great Lakes holds 95% of the surface freshwater in the United States. A pipeline breach is catastrophic. These facts alone should be enough to end the discussion and the existence of line five and its reroute. But if you many of us still believe the propaganda of the oil industry and are frightened about making a change in course. You, the Army Corps, have an enormous responsibility to provide stopgap measures and allow clear thinking to prevail. By ordering a federal environmental impact statement for all portions of line five within your jurisdiction, you can educate the public on the true risks of this pipeline. By reviewing Enbridge's record of misrepresenting risks, violating permits, spilling oil, and covering up environmental damage, you can counter the lack of oversight and enforcement that has allowed injustices to prevail.
One minute.
You have the opportunity and the responsibility to reverse the lack of knowledge that has led to this needless destruction of our environment. Line five threatens the entire region, shutting down line five who created the opportunity for all of us to justly transition to safer, more sustainable energy. And as I said before, our resistance is growing and will continue to. I urge you to help us. Thank you.
Next speaker, and the speaker after that will be the last one until we take a break. Your next, sir. We have a little mask.
Good afternoon, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Dean Julian, D E A N, J U L I E N. I'm a steam fitter and business agent for Steam Fitters Local 601. As a business agent of 601, I get to work with both our members, as well as our contractors, union contractors. Together, these workers and contractors build the infrastructure that allow our country to function. Our members are very proud of the training and work they do. Our local, as well as Wisconsin Pipe Trades Association, fully support the line five relocation projects. I understand and the serenity and the beauty of Northern Wisconsin as my grandfather was an art carrier captain on the Great Lakes. My father was born and raised in Iron River, which is roughly 40 miles west of here. I spent a good portion of my life as an outdoorsman, both hunting and fishing in this area, so I do know him well. The Enbridge line five relocation project will employ highly skilled welders, trained right here in Wisconsin at our training facilities in Milwaukee and Madison. These welders spend thousands of hours in initial training, in addition to fulfilling career-long requirements for continued education. They are highly educated, highly trained welders and fitters before even touching a single pipeline joint. One myth that needs to be called out is that the pipeline jobs are temporary jobs. Frankly, this is kind of an insulting characterization we often hear by those opposing infrastructure projects in general. These pipeline workers are no different than an accountant or a lawyer. They go from project to project, maintaining full-time employment, making six-figure salaries and full benefits, including a robust retirement. They are educated just as much as any professional holding a postgraduate degree and are considered some of the top workers in their industry in the world.
One minute, sir.
In short, these are lifelong, family-sustaining jobs that are anything but temporary. In my career, I have been involved in numerous Enbridge projects and can personally attest to their commitment to the workers on their projects, their commitment to designing, constructing, and operating safe pipelines, and their continued work to be good environmental stewards. This project is no different. As anyone who experienced in this industry can attest, the line five relocation project has been designed to create the smallest environmental footprint possible, using technology and techniques that will ensure the environment will be left undisturbed whenever possible. This includes... This includes the use of cutting-edge horizontal drilling. It's my opinion and the opinion of nearly ten thousand pipe trades members of our international union that we represent that the line five location should move forward and that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers should approve the necessary permits to begin construction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker and last speaker before the break.
Hi, my name is Megan Spielbauer Sanbate. That's M E G A N S P I E L B A U E R S A N D A T E. I've lived in Pejo, otherwise known as Madison, Wisconsin for the last six years and then Minnesota before then. I believe that the current draft environmental assessment is incomplete and underestimates the impact of the proposed pipeline reroute, both environmentally and culturally. I think that the, we should be not move forward with this pipeline reroute and if the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers are not prepared to make that decision today, to go back and do a complete environmental impact statement. Climate change is ravaging our planet, so the government must be conducting intricate and thorough environmental analysis for any project that further invests in this country fossil fuels. Based on what I've seen online and in the overview of public involvement in the draft statement, there doesn't appear to be a version of the document in languages other than English. There's a large flagrant among populations in Wisconsin, plus no documents appear to have been provided in no web. Today, no instruction for these sections have been provided in languages other than English. Additionally, large mainstream environmental organizations in Wisconsin tend to be very white, between the majority of the analyses or guides to the draft document are also only in English. I don't think an environmental justice analysis is possible when materials are not presented in multiple languages. It makes it clear to me that outreach not only has only been done to communities who fit into what some people think Wisconsin looks like and who would think who they think would care about this issue. Poisoned waterway doesn't limit its impact to contained areas. Water knows no borders. Borders are something created by pollinators. This pipeline reroute will impact the entire area in generations to come. Enbridge has had several leaks of fur across line three and line five. Enbridge continues to run or continue to run the line five pipelines through Bad Urban even after they told them to stop. Bad Urban said, "Out of the watershed," and Enbridge then proposes reroute. To me, Enbridge is not an entity I would trust. Would you trust the word of a person who has messed up on the job and doesn't honor the terms of your agreement? There is talk of all the jobs that would happen, but historically pipelines are very deep-performed jobs. Building this reroute will not move us into a more environmentally sound future. It will only further put us in the past, invested in systems of energy that only destroy our planet and work to undermine indigenous communities. I understand that disrupting the markets is scary, and I'm not going to pretend like I know what like you and the protein kids and all that. I know I'm city folk to a lot of you. But I do know that the same landlords and owners who are raising my rent and raising the rents of all my meeting members, and the same people who are buying up land up here and pushing up costs for y'all up north, we are in this together. It is the people, the billionaire and multinational corporations like Enbridge and the U.S. government for repeatedly allowing people and companies with money to radicalize of low-income folks and destroy small businesses. So it's time to stand up and say no more to crumbs. We want state energy, and we want it now for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we take a break, I want to make a little announcement. So we have some folks on the WebEx. We have to understand that if you want to speak, you have to be here. You can't do it on a WebEx. Okay? And then we're going through rather quickly. This is great. You're basically adhering to the rules. So we're going to do probably another draw eventually to get more speakers and all that, but they have to be present to actually speak. Sir.
Thank you. Up next, we'll take a fifteen-minute break, and we'll resume at one fifteen. Thank you.
Please, everybody. Speaker Seals. Thank you. We're going to restart, but I made an announcement last time, and maybe it was a little confusing. So the thing is, we have some folks in overflow room that are looking at this area WebEx. What I was trying to make my point was that if you're over there and you're one of the speakers, come on back in, right? Because you have to speak from here and not through the WebEx. Number one. Number two is, timing is great. Every reason, I did a fantastic job. It's kind of bad right now because some of the speakers may have left, thinking they're not going to be on for an hour or two. And yet, they're going to be on sooner. So if you are a speaker, if you are registered, if you've got your, please come back in so we can keep the line flowing. Okay? And then we're going to switch moderators for just a little while here. AJ can be the moderator now.
Good afternoon. The fifteen-minute break is concluded, and the hearing is now in session.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, you may begin.
Hey, is the mic active? I guess so. My name is Tom Galazin, G A L A C E N. A lifelong resident of Fayetteville County, a farmer by choice and by occupation. Oops.
Please, is that it?
Hanging around during the break, I noticed that Andy Proppa could grab your sign, the no exit. And I think that describes a lot of the situation here. Pipeline goes through, and if there's problems here or anywhere along with the other segments of the pipeline, for a lot of, a lot of people and a lot of organisms, there's no exit. There's no real cleanup of groundwater and late water. And there's no saving a lot of organisms that are drenched in oil and gas.
Sir.
Hey, ma'am. It wasted my three minutes walking around. Yes, I'm with him. A few things to the past, comments to make today, but I think they're important. I've been off-grid, gosh, a couple of years since nineteen eighty-two. Oh, okay. And I'm not cold in the winter, and I don't often run out of electricity. I solar and I heat my place of wood, cook with wood, and have hot water heated with wood. And I run refrigerators and heating because I do a lot of refrigeration freezing of stuff to sell from my farm. And I've thought about things a lot over the years because of the energy. That's why, even before James Hansen made his, his famed speech about climate change in nineteen eighty-eight, I was already off-grid. And it's a serious matter. Some people have pointed to the power sands development and exploitation as game over for the climate. And I think that's largely inaccurate. But here's a chance for us to take a step back and to shut off some of this power sands fuel that's coming and fueling an environmental and climate crisis. And I think it should look clearly and completely at that. Some other things that I think should be mentioned. Since I try to conserve a lot of energy in my personal life, I've got a GeoMetro I run. It's nineteen ninety vintage. And it's getting kind of old, but I got to get a bucket on that and put a bucket on that. And hop in for next week or pretty much. It's been three minutes.
Three minutes? Including my walking time? And there's no fit.
Wow. Okay. I just saw this written comment, which I'm sure you'll.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to get some of that written comment. Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Hi, my name is C. Lemke, C E E L E M K E. My grandpa can, he was one of the Hawkins Lady Smith Lemkes. That was born in Madison. I have a vacation cabin halfway between here and Cable that I rent out at cost to people who want to see the beautiful Northwoods. Just switching from propane to a heat bomb. It's not that expensive. It's more efficient, okay? I live in Duluth, Christmas city of the north, where we did not have winter this year. In the widow of Carl Sack, a cartographer outdoorsman father. I would like to read you this message Carl wrote to Enbridge shortly before he died a couple of months ago. He wrote, "You stole my winter. You sold the fun of cross-country skiing through sparkly crystal air. You sold the protective blanket of snow for our spring wildflowers, the water for our streams, the rust for our vultures and spruce trees, the ice from our ice fishermen, and the pure unyielding cold from our greatest lake." Army Corps, Enbridge will make the case that the risk of poisoning the water is worth it because the flow of oil is necessary. It isn't. We can get energy other ways. There is no other way to have winter. And no way to pull it back once it's gone. I would like Carl's sons to ski book across the bay someday. What my father did for twenty years until this year, when it was muddy trudge along the shore. And begging you, this requires a full environmental impact statement. It's so deeply needed. Look at the maps Carl made that show the whole long shots. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker.
Good morning. My name is Emily Plisko, E M I H O L I E R I P Z K O W. And I'm the executive director of the Wisconsin Building Trades Council. The Wisconsin Building Trades is a coalition of labor unions that represent more than forty thousand spelled great people across the state of Wisconsin, but referred to many of them already speaking up here today. We're established to advocate for the rights and the interests of workers in the construction industry, and we focus on promoting fair wages, safe working conditions, and quality training programs. We collaborate with local governments, contractors, and other stakeholders to ensure that the construction projects we work on adhere to high standards and benefit the community economically and socially. In that capacity, I'm here to speak in favor of the line five reroute project and its significance for our state particularly as it relates to the careers and employment of our union workers. Well, the line five reroute project allows this piece of critical energy infrastructure to continue to operate safely in Wisconsin as it has done since nineteen fifty-three. It also presents a generational opportunity to boost local employment and to put our members to work. Firstly, the reroute project is set to generate a substantial number of construction jobs, as other speakers have covered. The project will support an estimated seven hundred family-sustaining construction careers, required largely from the regions of union halls, and it will provide an economic boost for northern Wisconsin communities. With an estimated four hundred and fifty million dollar cost, this project requires a diverse range of skills from all of our trades. This influx of job opportunities will not only benefit those directly employed by the project, but also add a hundred and thirty-five million dollars in economic impact to the state. Moreover, the construction jobs created by the line five reroute project are not, as others have shown, quote-unquote, temporary positions. Many of these roles will extend over years to come, providing steady employment and financial stability for homeless families of northern Wisconsin. This long-term employment will allow our workers to gain valuable experience and skills, further enhancing their career prospects in the construction industry across the state. In conclusion, the line five reroute project is not just necessary infrastructure for our state. It means sustaining construction careers, prioritizing local hiring, investing in training, and building.
Okay. All right, the five-minute break is concluded. The hearing is now in session. Okay, before we start, speakers, just a reminder to the speakers to speak correctly to the mic. I'm making it a little closer, just to make sure that people can hear on the broadcast. Okay. Next speaker, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Sean Gallagher, S C A M G A L L H A T R. I've been a lifelong resident of northern Wisconsin and acquired Enbridge for just over twelve years. During that twelve years, I've been a member of the pipeline maintenance team in Superior, Wisconsin. Crew is, crew is responsible for maintaining and replacing any of our infrastructure that needs repair. We are trained in emergency response, and we are the first on-site of any, any emergency that potentially occurs. We are professional, tight-knit individuals that care a great deal about each other, our work, the environment that we work in living. We work side by side with other pipeline maintenance crews from places such as Steefer Falls, Minnesota, South for Wisconsin, Ironwood, Michigan, and many others. And it is clear working with these people that employees across Enbridge take great pride in our work in our communities. Our pipeline maintenance crews are strategically located throughout our right-of-way to ensure quick response to any and every emergency. As said, it is no surprise that Enbridge goes beyond addressing potential impacts and exceeds all current agency and reclamation standards. Their commitment and approach truly represents the strict environmental values with Enbridge operates. There are many reasons and statistics to show the importance of replacing line five and ensuring essential fuels feed homes, schools, and businesses are delivered throughout our region. Enbridge is a company that operates on great integrity, and they care about the people and the communities that we touch. For these reasons, I'm in support of line five. Thank you.
Speaker.
Jason Goward, Bonne Lake Reservation and Bonne Lake Travel Monitor. We're hired to the Bonne Lake Reservation as a accountability to Enbridge, to hold them accountable, and there's been already multiple incidences where Enbridge has not been held in trust. They seem to make up their rules and not necessarily abide them when we're not babysitting them. We have noticed procedure violations as well as safety violations, and they don't always hold true to their work. This water that we're trying to protect, lake superior, is very vital to this, not only tourism industry, but this, you know, the oils only worth billions. The waters were priceless, you know, quadrillions if you had to put a number on it. I don't know for removing line five, which will create jobs, repairing the water of Flint, Michigan, which will create jobs, water pipelines, which will create jobs. But we don't need no more oil, especially with the mild winter that we've had recently. Copper Falls has had a very unique species of plant there called the black ash tree, which is endangered in the United States. And Bonne Lake Reservation, we've had lots of invasive species issues from people all around the country coming to our area, spreading invasive species. We need to stop that now before we, before the black ash tree is extinct. And also protect our water. The boring under Copper Falls might also release possible minerals that are not yet known yet. We need a further EIS draft. You know, it could release sulfur, sulfide, which is poisonous to the water supply. And this is coming from my professional opinion. I work for Enbridge, and I've also have protected the water as well. So thank you very much.
Could you say it in the proper sense?
J A S O N G O W A R D. Thank you.
Next speaker.
My name is Sherri Teter, S H E R I L, C O M E T R. I'm a quasi-citizen, but today I'm coming to, as a member, as a stakeholder from the condo I think actually married eighteen days before a TV party. I'm a stakeholder from the condo I think actually in eighteen eighty-four, twenty thirty. Jennifer has traded her in the eighteen fifty-four. I'm actually in front of a good sort of tour. And then a condo of eighteen fifty-four, I'll find the right six of the eighteen thirty-seven, eighteen forty-two going all the way up into the ship. It wasn't a stakeholder. Because all the aquifer islands have been returned to the right water. I'm from the Atlantic, I'm sure enough. I'm in the United States as one of the terminals like this. So somebody took them, stole them away. I've seen parts here. I would not have stayed on. I don't need to act down the way superior. The only management responsible was completely defeated. I'm from Wisconsin. I've always had feelings for it. Whether it be in the bad river, and now bad river, she finally says that we will. Now, the United States are in court obligation. Even the biggest question, is are we going to our own, Article Six of the United States Supreme? Constitution itself, which is our legal right. So when we say no, I do not see the act of Congress or President of the law anybody in. Again, we have to go actually with aquifer bridges. And I want to be careless.
One minute.
If I'm recalling Janine, the laws he's putting, even out, having Enbridge one of them each solution, it's in the horizontal drilling, because of the thirteen aquifer bridges. On the lack of land is still leaking six gallons in six minutes because of Enbridge. And, but still.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Casey Aronson, C A S E Y A R O N S O N. I was born here in Ashland. Today, my family and I live in the country, about ten miles outside of Spooner on a small lake. We love the great outdoors, and our free time, we enjoy being outside with nature, whether it be boating, kayaking, canoeing, hunting, fishing, hiking, gardening, or just sitting in the backyard listening to the birds. I believe that God spent a little extra time when he made northern Wisconsin. We live in one of the most beautiful places in the world. I would consider myself the steward of the land, and I hope that we all would. While we're enjoying the outdoors, we try to leave it the way we found it. Seventeen years ago, I started my career as a heavy equipment operator. I joined the Operating Engineers Local 139 Apprenticeship Program and went to work on an Enbridge pipeline. For two years, I worked in wetlands, river crossings, and other environmentally sensitive areas. I personally experienced the care and thoughtful planning that is put into crossing a wetland, creek, or river, making sure that animals, fish, trees, water, and the earth are safe and protected while being disturbed. When finished, we left the land how we found it. Enbridge, along with the union contractors and union employees, worked together to go above and beyond the requirements to protect the environment and the wildlife. We support clean energy as well, such as solar and wind. However, as we transition to a more clean energy, there is still need for reliable energy. We can't rely on solar or wind to heat our homes, schools, and hospitals, along with fueling our vehicles, buses, and farm equipment. If we all use wood to heat our homes, schools, hospitals, and businesses, I'm pretty sure we wouldn't have too many trees left. I'm asking you to issue the permits required and move this project forward.
One minute.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning or good afternoon, I should say, my name is Brian Deak, B R I A N, D A K, D. I'm the president of Wisconsin Independent Businesses. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in this public hearing about the Enbridge Line 5 Relocation Project. WIB is one of the state's largest small business advocacy organizations. We proudly represent more than two thousand small business owners throughout Wisconsin. For decades, Enbridge Line 5 has safely transported affordable, reliable fuel and energy that Wisconsin's small businesses need to operate. This pipeline provides gasoline, the fuels of delivery trucks, and propane for heating and cooling their facilities. The future of this vital link in the energy infrastructure network for Wisconsin and the upper Midwest is uncertain, and that is deeply concerning to us. Wisconsin is not a fuel-producing state. Without Line 5, nearly twenty-three million gallons of crude oil and natural gas liquids transported daily through this pipeline would have to be transported by more expensive needs, truck or rail. Wisconsin's small business cannot afford these costly alternatives. If Line 5 is shut down, a major regional propane supplier, Plains Midstream, has warned it would shutter its three propane facilities, which in turn would lead to propane shortages and price hikes worse than the propane shortage of the twenty thirteen, twenty four, fourteen winter that led to Wisconsin declaring a state of emergency. Ashland and Iron Counties are home to many small businesses that rely on the powerful natural resources to draw tourists and residents for fishing, hunting, and recreation. We are pleased the route Enbridge selected for the pipeline avoids some of the more sensitive areas and offers protection to the natural resources so valuable to many of these businesses. We appreciate the fact that the project was designed to mitigate and/or minimize any impacts on the wetlands or watershed areas with which the construction project comes in count. The reduction of the construction workspace also minimizes any adverse effects on the tourism industry in the area. With the necessary permits from the Army Corps of Engineers and the Department of Natural Resources, this relocation project will provide good-paying union construction jobs to an estimated seven hundred skilled trade workers and result in an overall economic impact in the state of Wisconsin of approximately one hundred and thirty-five million dollars. For these reasons, we respectfully ask the Army Corps of Engineers to approve the permits associated with Line 5 relocation project and allow Enbridge to move forward with the construction and completion of this pipeline. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, you could all be silent soon, so I'll mark others back if you have anything. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Adam Casino, A D A N O, C A S E N O. I am a long-life resident of northern Wisconsin. I am also a member of the Operating Engineers and work in the capacity as a business agent. I cover seven counties in northeast Wisconsin with Local 149 or 139. While Operating Engineers Local 139 is headquartered in Peewaq, the union maintains district offices in Madison, Appleton, and Altona, as well as a state-certified training site in Coloma, where it puts an emphasis on training its members to be the most productive and safest operating engineers that can be and employees for the contractors they work for. Operating Engineers Local 139 has more than eleven thousand five hundred active men and women, as well as retired members, with nearly fifteen hundred members living in northern Wisconsin. You know, Bayford County, Ashland County, Iron County. I'm one of these people. Operating Engineers Local 139, and I believe, as well as most Wisconsinites, consider Enbridge to be a good community member. They employ hundreds of our neighbors and friends, pay millions in taxes, and safely and efficiently transport the North American source and produce products that are vitally important to the safety of our families and to the health of our economy. The Line 5 relocation project does not increase the use or capacity of crude oil or refined products. It simply replaces a portion of the existing line at the request of the sovereign tribal nation with new, even safer pipe.
One minute.
The Line 5 relocation project was thoroughly surveyed and selected to avoid sensitive resources and areas. For the project design, it mitigates and minimizes impacts on wetlands, water bodies, threatened endangered species habitat, archaeological and cultural resources, and other areas that may impact the health and vitality of the forests within the area. As a longtime resident of northern Wisconsin, I know firsthand that, living in northern Wisconsin, I worked outside the area along with most of the other fifteen hundred members that I mentioned earlier. This project will give these people an opportunity that are probably gone all week, sometimes all month, or maybe gone all summer, all over the United States working. This whole project will give them an opportunity to work closer to home and spend the extra time with their family and friends.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Kay Larson, L A R S O N. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on this important issue. I'm here because I believe it is important for you to use your power and authority to stop the use of Line 5. This is an important issue to me because of several reasons. I served in the U.S. military for a total of twenty-seven years. I served tours of duty in Vietnam as well as Central Asia. My oath of enlistment required me to support and defend my country. I did that. It's in that same spirit that I'm here today. For me, there are three critical reasons to stop the use of Line 5. First of all, because the sovereign nation of the Bad River people have asked that we stop. Decades of infringement of that pipeline or their land was wrong. Their requests were ignored. That wrong needs to be righted, not simply by shifting Line 5, but stopping the use of Line 5. Secondly, the environmental danger of having an oil pipeline so close to the beautiful freshwater treasure of Lake Superior is unacceptable. A break, a leak, even a seep in the ancient pipeline would cause environmental damage and possibly catastrophic harm to the lake and the surrounding area. Lastly, climate change is real. We experienced a consequence of that two weeks ago when an eighty mile an hour wind blew through the Madison area. Weather events which used to occur only once every fifty or a hundred years are now occurring with insidious regularity. Burning fossil fuel is the primary cause of climate change. Pulling farmland oil out of the ground for the sake of cheap oil at quick trip is ruining the future habitability of our world. We must focus on renewable energy. It creates good labor, union jobs. Again, thank you for allowing me to provide this testimony. Please use your power and authority to stop the use of Line 5. Stop it for the sake of the people of Bad River Reservation. Stop it for the sake of the safety of Lake Superior. Stop it for the sake of the well-being of our natural world and for all the people on our mother earth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, colleagues, I'm from Wisconsin. My name is Everlasting Wind, and I'm from Weyder. My English name is Dawn Gibbon, D A W N G O O D W I N. I'm here today to warn you all. I'm from Minnesota. This is a repeat of history. Indigenous people, my people, we were ignored in Minnesota during the construction, the reroute and relocation of Line 3. This is a repeat. Bad River community is being ignored. Treaties and sovereignty are being ignored. And we're tired of it. We are tired of it. I'm going off script right now. We are tired of it. We are. These are our lands. You may think you own them, but these are native lands. This is Indian land. You are all here because we signed treaties to live in peace. We are in a climate emergency, and people are not acting as such. The days of entitlement are over. We need to protect what's left. And it's your responsibility to do it. Every single one of you. And I'm sorry if I'm charged. But I want you to know that, yes, I am angry. I am angry at what happened in Minnesota. I know my friend testified.
One minute.
The monitoring of Line 3 construction. There was four reported frackouts. One frac, or not fracout, aquifer breach. One was reported several months later after Enbridge was allowed to take five billion gallons of water in a drought, extreme drought. No, corrected, exceptional drought. There's even a bigger tournament extreme. We were in a drought. We were fighting Line 3. And then the trees were wilting. As I wiped down one last time to appeal to my Minnesota governor to stop Line 3. And pay attention to our treaties. Respect. The indigenous people went in for all.
Thank you, thank you.
If Line 5 were unreasonable to be shut down, the feds would not have demanded so.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. All right, next speaker.
Good morning. I'm from Wisconsin. Most of the people in Wisconsin, I said my name is Wisconsin woman and delinquent, and I am from Bad River, and I carry the Thunderbird clan. My given name is Jill Hartlett, J I L L A F A R T L E E. Right away, because I didn't write anything down, I just want to say I am standing in support of the reroute. I'm fine. And I would, in case I run out of time, just want to give you a little history on how I did not always have that perspective, and that's not where my heart was all the time. I myself was also on an environment committee that was formed by the Bad River tribe when mining company was coming. And I got to learn about the Pinocchis and how sacred they are during that time. I did a lot of things that were out of my wheelhouse, testified, go to Madison. I was a youth worker, and it didn't match my life. And I believe that what I heard originally, one of the first, when it came into my radar, was that a ceremony had been performed and said that the Pinocchis are going to be okay. They're there to protect and be there for the people, but they're not going to do it if they don't know you. So, I asked, I feasted, I put berries out, I walked with some sisters, Nishnabi and other. And it was a long journey, and I always wanted to keep peace and do the right thing. I never thought of myself as a protector, but I took it upon myself to use the teachings of caring and caring for the water. And so, I got disengaged from my tribe through pandemic and everything else, and then realized that there was a lawsuit. And it scared me that it, with the counter suit, it forced the company to do a reroute. But they did come to our community and offer support and community tribal engagement, and have given some of the tribal members that took the opportunity to do career that took the opportunity to do career path changes. And she's not in this room, but my daughter had opioid treatments and took a course that was scholarship by Enbridge. And now she is doing environmental work on Line 3. So over 45 days ago, she was an opioid addict. And now it's given opportunity for a new career path.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker.
Ojito, I was, um, yeah. Nakomas is my name. I have a few things. Okay, so first, we need to have more public comments. So we need to write that down. Consultation is not consent. Of course, we already know that, right? The other thing is, I really wanted to say, you seriously don't know what had happened in North Dakota? No, we don't have that. It's, okay. All right, well, let me share with you what had happened in North Dakota. Do you know a tree will last a family of four? Four days of oxygen.
One minute.
Did you know that? Did anybody know that? So what is Enbridge doing? What is the Army Corps doing to reduce that? There is so much wrong with this process. You don't even know where to begin. We had gone to Washington, DC to deliver 9,000 petitions. There we got denied. There they told us to speak with the project manager. Are you the project manager? No, okay. Anyways, so I posted these talking to you that no means no.
Thank you, ma'am.
When you talk to children.
Your thing messes up. Thank you.
Also, I have, oh wait, never mind. I'll save that for later. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, you can submit right.
Oh, I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Can you spell your name for me? N.O.O.K.O.M.I.S.
All right, next speaker.
My name is Jean Pagliaro, J.E.A.N.P.A.G.L.I.A.R.O. I traveled here today with my friends from the Franciscan Sisters of Perpetual Adoration in La Crosse, Wisconsin, right on the Mississippi River. Living in that beautiful part of the state has shown me how crucial it is to protect watersheds as valuable natural resources. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and for working on this very important issue. I'm speaking in opposition to Enbridge's proposed permit for the Line 5 oil pipeline. And I want to start off by saying that I recognize the complexity of all of this. I know that livelihoods, no matter what, are going to be affected. I hear that. I understand it. My values compel me to share today. The only option for long-term sustainable livelihood is no pipeline. There are multiple generations that have already been impacted by this pipeline and it will continue to impact future generations. Line 5 is a risk to ecosystems that support livelihoods such as fishing, hunting, gathering. The potential for catastrophic failure of Line 5 would destroy the health and well-being of rural communities. According to the Wisconsin Health Equity Data from the University of Wisconsin Population Health Institute, communities in rural Wisconsin already experienced poorer health outcomes, significant disparities in healthcare access, especially for mental health providers. To allow this pipeline to remain open is to risk devastation to communities, families, and individuals that already are vulnerable. I'm a mom of two.
One minute.
I know how difficult it is to provide for a family. And I also know that when stability, health, and well-being is threatened, that has a huge effect on the people that I love. So I'm asking you to oppose the permit for Line 5 because of the significant threat to our ecosystem as well as the overall health and wellness that spans from generation to generation. Thank you again for taking the time to listen. And I hope you'll consider them as you make your decisions.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Ellen Sims, E.L.L.E.N.S.I.M.S. And I'm here today to recognize that there's not an easy solution. Jobs may be lost, money always involved. There's something that I'm speaking for today that is irreplaceable, and that's clean water. This is not our land. This is not our land. We as humans think we're above everything, at least by the ways that we act. We're a part of this earth. The First Nations people knew this. They lived for centuries without propane. They lived with the earth, honoring it as sacred, as a part of them. And we too could do this and learn. There's no easy way. But I just want you to consider our children, this earth. Do you have children? I know we all were children. I will never forget playing in the creeks and the woods as a kid. It's my sacred, safe space from humans, from biting, whatever. And I used to play in the creek with the cradas and salamanders. And there was one day when I went down there and they were dead. My heart's broken. Have you ever seen a child's heart breaking?
One minute.
When they play in nature and they love it. They don't know anything different. The bird dies. Have you seen that child's heart broken? And that was just a moment in my life that I'll never forget from some construction of a new neighborhood up the river. They weren't doing anything wrong. But imagine, imagine tons of gallons of oils. We are not infallible. We are fallible. We make mistakes. Now that you make mistakes, were you on your computer yesterday and it glitched? We can't say that it's not going to happen. And then what happens when Lake Superior has oil in it? What happens when the White River has oil in it? And even then, just the construction or the rerouting. I reject Line 5. And I don't have much time and I won't take up more space. But let's just consider, there are alternatives. There are alternatives to dogs. There are alternatives to propane. There is not an alternative to clean water.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Matthew Bork. He is in Boy, O.R.K.E. I'm coming over from Michigan and visiting some of my relatives here. And I'd like to point out something that somebody else just previously mentioned. If you could all have a plaque of who you are. I see the kernel here, but we would like to know who we're actually speaking to that would help us in this conversation process. Part of the background, my background is that this is a chef. And we have this problem and I make food and it relies on water. People poison the water. Actually, pretty main position that I'm actually poisoning people. We think that we've gone so far in the last 400 years and it appears that we've gone from kill the Indian, save the man, to save the corporation, kill the human. We haven't really gone that far. I'm coming here from Michigan. I've lived in Kalamazoo Oil still and I've lived through the Flint water crisis. Your assessment that you put out talks about separating the different things and not having things that are connected. And I'll tell you, if one part shuts down, it's connected to the other part. You separate something that is obviously connected. We stopped it down at the streets of Baton Rouge. Bad River, we have both areas. This pipeline is 71 years old. They're talking about a reroute. It is not a reroute. They're building a new pipeline. Let's be real about this. This isn't just a small reroute. It's 21 years past. It's like expectancy. They're building a whole new pipeline and they're doing it one piece at a time, forcing the expedition. Do you have the ability to say no? If you don't have the ability to say no, then you need to go bring it up to your boss. Because then you don't actually have a choice. So what are we paying for you for if you cannot protect us?
Yeah.
Third parties, third parties. Are you out there on these easements, monitoring these guys? No, you're part of these third parties. The third parties work for the company. I'd work with these third parties. I've had them blame me for sabotage, for contamination that the companies have caused. The data that you're getting in that report is what we call PR material, public relations material. You're asking them for files. They put together a focused informational packet that is there for public relations. It's not real data. You want real data, ask them for the real data. You go back to the Kalamazoo oil spill. I know two people that are left alive. Everybody else is dead. Dead due sickness, due disease, slowly. And the animals, the people, this is where we're at now. So we ask you to deny the possibility to carry this, even a step forward. Why are we paying for you guys crying here? If you're not going to protect us. Line 5 needs to be shut down. Last week, the year before, the year before, we're in a ticking time bomb. And every single day, we are at risk. Cut it down. Thank you.
Before we begin the next speaker. So we are almost at the end of session one. Our last speaker will end at 3:00 PM or just after to allow the speaker their full three minutes. Registration for the Settle Two Lottery begins at 3:00 PM and closes at 3:45. Persons not heard during this session are welcome to register for Settle Two. Okay, next speaker, please.
My name is Katherine Johnson, K.A.T.H.E.R.I.N.E., Weyder, K.A.S.O.N. I want to start with some numbers you've already heard today and presumably already knew about before this. 1.1 million gallons, over 33 documented spills. That's not guaranteed to be all. But 1.1 million gallons over the time period that this pipeline has existed illegally on this land. Those are facts. Those aren't, someone earlier said that he believed that they would do it in a safe way. That's very nice of him, but I don't believe him over the fact, which is that it is not a matter of will this leak? Can we keep it safe? It's a matter of they do leak, they constantly leak. And we know that. We know that this one will leak. It is just a matter of time until when it does again, right? It could today, it could tomorrow. So I want you to keep those facts in mind. Whenever people from Enbridge say these things, don't just take those things at face value. It is your job to not take those things at face value. It is your job to look at research and data compiled by professionals. I want to discuss one of the other harms that construction of new pipelines, and in this case, the rerouting of this pipeline can cause for indigenous communities. Camps that are set up to construct pipelines are called, in that context, man camps. Man camps are folks who don't live in that area, in that community, and they don't have ties to that community, right? They're temporary positions. They don't have ties to that land or that place. Those man camps are proven, again, to be the cause of increase in drug and alcohol abuse, violence, racism, and sexual violence harassment and trafficking in those areas. Forty percent of sex trafficking victims are indigenous women. These increases happen within those indigenous communities. Just because it is routed around that pipeline does not mean that it is not still within that area of those indigenous communities who are going to receive harm from this. Murder is the third leading cause of death for indigenous women, which is a rate 10 times higher than other ethnicities. These cause demonstrative harm to the rights that treaties protect, both the rights of individual people to be safe and on their own land and their rights to use their natural resources for their cultural purposes. And those include their waterways, not just that delineation, that square delineation of land that we see on a map. And any spill into any of these waterways is going to affect all of this. These have negative consequences for these communities. And we cannot be disregarding that in the face of, as someone said, PR from Enbridge, paid people from Enbridge. Enbridge gathering groups of people to come here and tell bold-faced lies in front of this committee. And it is your job to winnow the truth from that and act accordingly.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you for having me speak today. My name is Angel Layd, A.M.G.E.L.L.A.I.D.L.A.W. I currently serve as the president and CEO for Centergy with the Regional Economic Development Organization serving central Wisconsin. We're here today to fully support the relocation of Line 5 Energy Pipeline, recognizing its crucial importance to Centergy region and our communities in the Midwest. This project offers a balanced solution that aligns with the environmental concerns while ensuring the continued operation of a vital piece of energy infrastructure. Energy stability is crucial for the Centergy region, which encompasses Adams, Lincoln, Marathon, Portage, and Wood counties here in Wisconsin. Centergy's mission is to advance the prosperity and vibrancy in central Wisconsin by fostering collaboration among businesses, governments, and educational institutes. The relocation of Line 5 aligns with our mission, which is to support the sustainable quality of life that's here in Wisconsin. And we want to promote by ensuring reliable access to essential energy resources. The potential shutdown of Line 5 would be far-reaching in consequences for our region. As you've heard, a major supplier has warned about several closures that would happen. This can create a supply shortage not seen since the state of emergency over a decade ago. As a resident of a Wisconsin rural community, I use propane. The prices are not cheap currently, along with many others in our communities. We rely solely on this to heat our homes or schools and our businesses. The absence of Line 5 would directly threaten our ability to maintain a safe and comfortable living environment during Wisconsin's severe winters. Not just for ourselves, but all families in Wisconsin. Enbridge has shown a strong commitment to environmental stewardship and community engagement in the planning of this relocation. The proposed route avoids sensitive areas and the agreements have been secured with all landowners along the path. I personally have been on the proposed reroute location and have spoke with local property owners who are in favor of it. The economic benefits from the relocation has been discussed here. And I will cover that because it's already been covered. Cutting conclusion, the Line 5 relocation project is essential for maintaining energy stability in the Centergy region and the Midwest. It ensures a continued supply of energy that's crucial to our resources, our home, our people, and our businesses. But it still respects the rights and concerns of the Bad River Band and supports the economic vitality of Wisconsin. I urge approval and swift implementation of this crucial project. And I thank you all for your time today.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Ryan Sisit, R.Y.A.N.S.I.S.T.A.D. I'm the executive director, veteran in our backyard. And I'm here today to talk in support, or probably support, for Line 5 relocation project, simply due to because we need the products that Line 5 delivers every day, whether it's the diesel for our cars, the gasoline for our cars, or the propane that we need to heat our homes. This past year, we've experienced record inflation numbers. Without Line 5, those inflation numbers are only going to increase and it's going to disproportionately impact low and middle-income citizens. And not only this, the project is also adhering to And not only this, the project is also adhering to the wishes of the Bad River Tribe of not being on tribal lands, and it's going to bring in over 700 million, or excuse me, 700, it's going to deliver 700 good-paying jobs, most of them good-paying union jobs, and most of those jobs will be from folks from northern Wisconsin, while also bringing in over $400 million of economic impact and increasing property tax revenues by over $8 million a year. So I just, I appreciate the opportunity to speak and support the project, and thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Phyllis Hasbro, P H Y L L I S, H A S B R O U C K. Thank you for holding this hearing on Line Five. I urge you to do a full environmental impact statement, given the immense threat that the proposed reroute poses to us all. This new portion of Line Five would be an even greater threat than the existing Line Five. How so? For all, the current Line Five has leaked or ruptured 29 times, releasing 1.1 million gallons of toxic carbon dioxide. Surely, a new section would not leak like that. Ha! Studies have shown that new pipelines are just as likely to rupture as old pipelines. But more importantly, our atmosphere is now in much worse shape than it was in 1953 when Line Five was laid. There is no more margin of error to avoid climate catastrophe. So even if Enbridge could guarantee that there would be no leaks or ruptures, this permit would need to be rejected because Line Five brings oil to markets to be sold and then burned, leading to the situation that Antonio Bluterra, head of the United Nations, called humanity opening the gates to hell. I'm speaking out directly to you employees of the Army Corps, whose job it is to thoroughly investigate the damage which a permit would permit. A thorough investigation means an environmental impact statement, which you so far have refused to do. Now, I understand how hard it would be to go against the wishes of big oil. Maybe if you denied a permit, you will be denied a job. But surely, the opportunity to shut those gates of hell, which the big oil is holding wide open, means that it means more than a promotion, a raise, or a job. Yes, it's true that you can only influence a small fraction of the oil currently getting to market, but your opportunity to set an example for agencies around the world must not be wasted. If you turn down this permit, you will be heroes to the people of the Great Lakes, the United States, and the world. What's at stake? The Zurich Insurance Group estimates that 1.2 billion people could be displaced globally by 2050 due to climate change and the natural disasters that are caused by it. That's only 26 years away, and the migration has already begun within the United States and throughout the world. Imagine yourself or your child or grandchild losing their home to a wildfire or a flood, becoming a climate refugee. What would you feel as you considered that you had approved a project that directly caused the warning that led to these catastrophes? Keep that scene in mind as you consider this opportunity that may not come again, the opportunity to start bringing down the level of atmospheric CO2 that threatens us all. Thank you.
Next speaker.
My name is Scott Pitt, S C O T T, P I T T A. Thank you for a well-run hearing. I strongly like the lottery system, selection process. I'm against the reroute of Line Five. The plan indicates that it will cross over 200 streams in its project, and it is mathematically impossible to cross 200 waterways without an error. In Minnesota, we learned that the same pipeliners had trouble building, constructing a pipeline across level or flat ground, have numerous crackouts, but still have the need fully repaired. If they cannot lay pipe across flat earth, there is no way they can build a pipeline through the hills. The risks to contamination are my primary concern. If there is a spill across this Bad River adjacent to Copper Falls Park, it will put two state parks and one national park at risk of contamination. This is suicide for the tourism of the area. Tourists aren't going to swim in the water that's contaminated. They're not going to fish in the parks if there are warnings that the fish are not safe to eat, if the fish are alive at all. A contaminated bay means the end of the salmon fishery business in Trawarcon Bay. It previously impacts the lakefront real estate. No one's going to spend $1 million like Capital Superior if they can't walk along the beach in front of their mansion. With regard to the permit, the maps currently used by Enbridge are outdated, and we need the newest maps, which include all the identifying features with regard to special water resources. One minute. No one has ever attempted a project on this scale in Wisconsin. The risks to the watershed are too high to permit. The cost of cleanup will be larger than the profits made from installations. And who will pay for the bill? Joint Finance? State of Wisconsin? Who will pay the price of cleanup? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Doug Hoyer, D U G H E U P R. I'm a settler from Minneapolis. And today, we've heard a lot about jobs and propane and safety and training and childhood memories and dreams, and we've had some live service to the environment and native culture. I'd like to read something here that you should recognize. The mission is to deliver vital engineering solutions in collaboration with our partners to secure our nation, energize our economy, and reduce disaster risk. Do you recognize that? That's your mission statement. So let's talk about securing our nation. Is security in a large energy infrastructure, or is security in distributable energy infrastructure? I put solar on my house four years ago, and I haven't paid an electric bill since. I don't need a large electrical infrastructure to do that. A large electrical infrastructure and a large fossil-fuel infrastructure like pipelines and refineries are a natural security risk. Distributed energy is not. Distributed renewable energy is not. Energize our economy. Where are the new jobs coming from? They're not coming from fossil fuels. They're coming from renewable energy. They're coming from service industry. One minute. Reduce the disaster risk. Again, large fossil-fuel infrastructures like pipelines and refineries have enormous risk for disaster. How about the Hussey plant in Superior? The asphalt fire? How about the Kalamazoo River rupture? How about the 1991 Line Three rupture in Grand Ratchett that fortunately occurred in the winter, so all the ice, all the oil was on the ice? Let's not even talk about Houston, Texas, or Cancer Alley. Bottom line is fossil fuels are not the future. Thank you.
Thank you. So I believe that's our last speaker. I'm going to turn it over to Bob.
Okay, the signing officer will close out this meeting in just a second, but just to give you a note. So we're going to remeet at 4:00. If you want to speak at 4:00, you need to make sure you register again. If you have to go tickets, the first seven, they don't count right now. So please re-register. It's open right now outside where it was before. And my two main speakers, I think it was really impressive. Professor did that. I think everybody stuck to the rules, and that's really great. So we're going to remeet at 4:00, but I want the signing officer to...
Thank you to everyone who provided comments during this session. We shall reconvene, as others have said today, at 4:00 PM for session two of this public hearing. Thank you. Have a great afternoon. I now conclude the first session of the Core's public hearing on Enbridge's permit request.
Well, Ben, this is great. So I'm going to introduce the table, and then the Colonel's going to speak, and then I'll come back on with the thing. So we have at the table Colonel Swenson, who's the Commander of the St. Paul District of Corps of Engineers. And then we have Chad, I always mean, kind of cuts on, sorry. He's the Chief of the Regulatory Division for the district. And then we have John Carroll, who's the Counsel of the District. Colonel?
Good afternoon. My name is Colonel Eric Swenson, and I'm the Commander for the Army Corps of Engineers, St. Paul District, and I am the Presiding Officer for today's public hearing. It is important to me that we hold this hearing near the proposed project site. And to do that today here in Ashland, we owe a huge thank you to our hosting facility, Northwood Technical College, and the college staff accommodating this hearing and all of us today. Enbridge Energy has requested the Corps grant a permit to discharge dredged and fill material in waters of the United States and install a pipeline under the White River, a navigable water of the United States. This work would facilitate the construction of Enbridge's proposed Line Five Wisconsin Segment relocation project. The Corps is evaluating Enbridge's application pursuant to Section 404 of the Clean Water Act and Section 10 of the Rivers and Harbors Act of 1899. The Corps does not have authority over the overall construction or operation of pipelines or any substance being transported within a pipeline. The purpose of today's hearing is to gather information to support a comprehensive, objective, and balanced decision on the permit application pursuant to our authorities. My role today is to listen to your feedback. I appreciate that you may have questions for the Corps today. However, during today's hearing, my staff and I will not be able to respond to questions or comments. Please understand that your comment is just as important to me when provided in writing as it is in person. Due to time limitations, each selected speaker will be allotted three minutes, and all those wishing to provide verbal comments during the hearing may not be allocated time. For these reasons, I have team members available on-site today to accept your written comments through 8:00 PM, and we are also accepting written comments provided via US mail or email through the end of the day, July 5, 2024. All comments, verbal and written, will be considered as part of the Corps' decision. I ask that each speaker provide their comments independently, and that each speaker is afforded the opportunity to share their views without interruption. With me today are members of my regulatory team, Office of Counsel, Public Affairs, Information Technology Staff, and the St. Paul District's Security Team. Today's hearing will be recorded and posted on our Line Five webpage for public viewing. Additionally, we have Corps reporters here to transcribe all verbal comments. The transcript will be made part of the Corps' administrative record. We will take short breaks approximately each hour, which may be called by our moderator. During the breaks, we will not be accepting or transcribing comments. Additional information regarding the Corps process and alternative methods to provide comments are available from my team members outside this auditorium. Finally, thank you to all attendees with me here today. I am heartened to see such interest from the public. Now, please give your attention to Bob for more detail on today's hearing.
Thank you, Colonel. Before we call the first speaker today, I'm going to review some of the basic information rules and expectations of this hearing. We are now beginning the second and final session of today's hearing, which will continue until 8:00 PM. Speakers for this session have been selected in a random lottery. Selected speakers must register at the signing table of this room outside this room. Each speaker will be limited to 33 minutes. To start with the screen, you see over here, it turns green, they start speaking. The display will turn yellow when each speaker is down to two minutes and red during the final minute. The timer will shift to black at the end of the three minutes a lot of time. To optimize the number of speakers, we alternate speakers from each podium. Room attendees will be assisting with bringing speakers to the queue. The order of speakers is displayed here, you see on that board over there. And we ask that persons with the six speakers following the current speaker lineup over here on the right, you see, and form to the right to the queue. Speakers who are not available when their opportunity to speak occurs will forfeit their opportunity. Speakers may not yield time to another person. When called to speak, it is imperative that you speak clearly and at a pace reasonable for our Corps reporter to back your comments. Please begin by starting your name and spelling in for the reporter. Again, all verbal comments received today will be recorded and made part of the Corps record. As such, please refrain from sharing any information that you do not wish to be made public, meaning personal confidential information. All attendees are welcome to quietly join or exit the room as capacity and limits allowed. Please respect each speaker's opportunity to comment and refrain from any disruptive behavior. If an instructive discussion occur, the signing officer may pause or adjourn the meeting. We will offer a five-minute break at 5:00 PM and a 15-minute break at 6:00 PM and another five-minute break near 7:00 PM. The signing officer will adjourn the meeting during the hearing at approximately 8:00 PM. After reporting the current speaker, their last full three minutes, as needed. For those persons who do not give verbal comment this day, including anyone in the speaker queue that we don't get to hear before 8:00 PM, you are welcome to provide written comments to the Corps today, or via email or via regular US mail. Additional information on comment methods and the Corps review are available online. Please see a Corps team member or a printed copy of today's rules and additional information. So I'm going to call up the first speaker, and then we're going to go to the queue out there. So the first speaker is Representative Sapi, which is trying to...
Hi, everyone. My name is Representative Angie Sapi, A N G I E S A P I K. First of all, I want to commend you all for being here. I know that this is a very heated debate, and it's been going on for a long time. And whether you're on one side or the other, the fact that there's such a big turnout shows that you all care about your community, and I think that's very, very commendable. Let's get down to the nitty-gritty. I'm here to emphasize the critical role that Line Five plays in our energy infrastructure. It fuels our transportation, heats our homes, powers our schools, and it drives our businesses. Line Five is crucial to America, not just this region. Once constructed, it's the best way to manage crude oil transportation with minimal risk to environment. It prevents damage to highways, it's safe for the environment, post-construction is aesthetically pleasing, and it's incredibly efficient. As someone who also works in logistics, let me tell you, to haul this on trucks or any other manner would be entirely inappropriate. A major propane supplier has also warned that if Line Five were to shut down, it would close its three propane refineries in our region, including one in my city of Superior. While some may argue that the oil being moved through this region doesn't affect our gas prices, it does affect our employment rates, and one of my top priorities as a legislator is making sure that there's ample opportunity for gainful, meaningful employment in my district. The shutting down of Line Five would create a supply shortage that we have not seen in decades, and it would have direct impact on those men and women who are employed by local refineries. Enbridge has been thorough in their assessments. They carefully selected a relocation route that avoids sensitive areas, and all landowners along the route have agreed to host the line. Enbridge's commitment has gone beyond regulatory requirements, and they have exceeded standards for cultural resources, water quality, groundwater interactions, and erosion risks.
One minute.
This reconstruction is slated as a $450 million reroute, and that is in a... This reconstruction is slated as a $450 million reroute, and that is an amazing feat to be able to engineer such a thing, to appease as many people as they can in one region. It's important to recognize Line 5's significance and the rights and regulations of everyone involved. Line 5 is more than just a pipeline. It's a lifeblood for many citizens in our state, and we can safeguard energy security, economic prosperity, and environmental stewardship. And although we have many conversations left on the table, I feel that we can really do it together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Nick.
Good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity to be here. I am Sister Georgia Christensen, G-E-O-R-G-I-A-C-H-R-I-S-T-B-N-S-B-N. I'm a Franciscan Sister of Perpetual Adoration. Our headquarters is in La Crosse, Wisconsin, and I'm happy to be here today with a number of Sisters from my community and colleagues. And I am here to deliver a letter to the Army Corps of Engineers, and I decided to do it personally rather than in mail. And doing it on behalf of our community, which as I said, is based in La Crosse, Wisconsin, and we minister globally. Dear U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the Franciscan Sisters of Perpetual Adoration is a community of Catholic sisters committed to environmental justice. The Line 5 pipeline threatens tribal and treaty rights in the ceded territory, the Great Lakes, and the climate. The pipeline, which has long passed its lifespan, is currently pumping oil under expired permits. Despite the Bad River ban of Lake Superior Tepo's request, that Enbridge remove Line 5 and not put a pipeline in the Bad River watershed. Enbridge's segment relocation project, the relocation project, is within the watershed and a risk to the predator people system still remains. If a rupture were to occur on the current or proposed Line 5, it would be devastating. All of the waterways in the area flow to Lake Superior and are critical for the water-rich area, especially with the importance of the wild rice in the area.
One minute.
Local economy, which relies on tourism, would also be negatively impacted by this spill. Additionally, as clearly articulated by Governor Evers' Task Force on Climate Change Report, we need to be moving away from fossil fuel infrastructure, not investing in new infrastructure. Please work to ensure that the Line 5 pipeline is decommissioned and removed, not expanded. We stand united in opposition to Enbridge's proposed Line 5 oil pipeline. The pipeline's impact on economy, natural resources, public health, and its violation of indigenous rights are unacceptable. Residents of the Great Lakes should not be forced to assume such risk of a project that is economically unviable in the long term and serves no clear public purpose. We call on Governor Evers and our state representatives, well as you, to oppose Line 5 because of its risks.
Thank you, Fincher.
Hello, I'm Isaac Drangstvitt, I-S-A-K-D-R-A-N-G-S-T-V-E-I-T. I just graduated from Wankey High School two days ago. I grew up in the Northwoods though, at my family's lumber farm. There I learned about the vital importance of our land, air, and especially water in Wisconsin. The small town of Crandon, in which our farm is located, still heavily relies on natural resource labor, such as logging, farming, and other forms of agriculture. All of these livelihoods, and thus mine, rely on clean air, clean land, and clean water. Line 5, although well disguised, threatens all of this. I don't need to spend my three minutes explaining what this decrepit pipeline is. I think you've spent your time understanding its threat. I'm here, losing a paycheck that could go to my upcoming politic education because we aren't doing the right thing. I want to thank you first, though, for serving our nation as a line of defense to our environment. I'm afraid, though, that the oil companies such as Enbridge have poked a hole in this defense. It's your job, it's your promise, that you protect us from poisoned water and land. A seventy-year-old pipeline near the largest bodies of fresh water in the world that has twenty years past its expected lifetime is an inherent risk to myself, my career, my family, and that of my peers. We are a generation inheriting a world on fire. Line 5 stokes it millions of gallons a day. A full environmental impact statement must be done to show this danger, as the bare minimum is keep your promise, not an environmental assessment. Not an inch of Line 5 is in the interest of the public, the climate, or our water. The Corps must evaluate how the construction and continued operation of Line 5 would harm natural resources, threaten public health, and destabilize the crime climate. Even as a teenager, I understand the impacts on ecosystems if there were to be a spill. On top of the over thirty others in this line's history would be extremely disastrous and permanent. The EPA themselves agree that a reroute would have substantial and unacceptable impacts. These impacts have not been fully reviewed in the Corps' analysis. The current analysis has not specifically reviewed the eight sites where in-stream blasting takes place. There's still time to do so with a full analysis. And I'd just like to add that I know that you're doing your job and thank you for your service, but this definitely impacts my future and that of my peers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Marsha Olson, M-A-R-C-I-A. I, when I was sixteen months old, I had immigrated from China due to poor water quality, which led to famine. And I had the privilege to be able to live in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, along the Great Lakes. And the Great Lakes are so important to me because we have access to clean water and it creates our community. The Great Lakes are so important for our economic status and our growth. The Great Lakes bring money to our community, trade, tourists, and aesthetics. The Great Lakes host very important community events that also impact our community, such as large events like Summerfest along the Great Lakes. And if there was to be an oil spill, all of that would be gone. And it wouldn't just affect our community and our money, it would also affect our nearby waterways, such as the Milwaukee Kinnikina and Menominee, which our leaders in our community have been working so hard to be able to clean and improve, to be able to be able to be formidable one day. And it's also very important for our trades. If there were to, if there was to be an oil spill, it would also affect our local trades and blue collar jobs because we're so reliant on the Great Lakes and water to be able to live and just be alive.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Jario Ramos, J-A-R-I-E-L-R-A-M-O-S. A newly graduated student from Pis High School in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, with Potawatomi, Ho-Chunk, and Menominee own land. And I thank you for this time. I'm here because I strongly disapprove of the Line 5 pipeline. As a young person, I implore the Army Corps to please take into full account the worry that us young people share towards Line 5 by extensively completing a full environmental impact statement before permitting this project. Allowing the Line 5 oil pipeline to exist instills a deep sense of fear and uncertainty in young people who see their future threatened by the relentless pursuit of profit over the planet's health. They dread inheriting a world scarred by environmental degradation, feeling powerless as decisions made today compromise their chance for sustainable and livable tomorrow. I'm here to amplify the voices of young Wisconsin youth who are scared, angry, and disappointed, and I simply can't fathom how we're in the year 2024 and we're still hesitant to not protect not only the environment, but native land. As a Butarican with indigenous roots, I recognize the pain that my Native American brothers and sisters face time and time again. The voice of an indigenous person should simply be enough concerning any conversation relating to their land. This isn't the 1600s or the 1700s, 1800s, this is 2024, and we are the occupiers here, which means the Bad River ban has the right to what and what not exists in their land, and we absolutely must respect that. So again, as a young person, I implore that the Army Corps of Engineers extensively complete a full environmental impact statement before permitting this project. You're all human beings, please embrace your humanness. Some of y'all might not be here in another forty years, but I will be, God willing. And Line 5 is not urgent to America, but clean water, land, and human lives are, and I promise to stay in this fight until it's a thing of the past. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good. Next speaker.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Mark Ryle, M-A-R-K-R-E-I-H-L. And I'm a community ambassador, working in southern, in the southern Wisconsin counties that Line 6, Enbridge Line 6, crosses on its way into Illinois. I strongly support Line 5, the Line 5 relocation project. As we heard earlier today, Line 5 is clearly necessary for the energy security and economic security of thousands of Michigan and Wisconsin residents. I am also going to mention, like others, I am a propane user. I am concerned that with the shutdown of Line 5, that propane will go to astronomical heights and it will cause a lot of economic issues across the state of Wisconsin. I also support it because I'm convinced that Line 5 can be reconstructed safely and will not threaten the pristine waters of nor, the ambiental resources of northern Wisconsin. And I'm confident because when I came to work for Enbridge, I was quickly introduced to all of the safety protocols and procedures that they implement every single day. And they do it both to protect employees and the environment. Now, as I say before, coming to work for Enbridge, I worked in the Wisconsin building trades, and I saw firsthand all the apprenticeship and training centers across this state, state-of-the-art training centers, and the kind of training that they provide, and they produce the best craftsman and women in the world. And so I am confident that those professionals are going to do the job and do it right. Finally, just looking at my own experience in southern Wisconsin, I see how Enbridge partners with local communities in southern Wisconsin to improve life for the residents of those communities. They strive to be a good corporate citizen. They support local community events, including grants to a number of food pantries, which makes a difference for a lot of people in need. And I'll end with that. Again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I strongly urge you to permit this project.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Zimmern, M-A-R-K-Z-I-M-M-B-R-M-A-N. I am a Wisconsin resident with extensive construction industry experience, including working on numerous pipelines, projects similar to the Line 5 relocation in regards to size, cropping rates, and geological conditions. After reviewing the Line 5 relocation project, it is my belief that the Army Corps of Engineers should approve the necessary permits and move forward with this project. While my construction career started in 1997, it started as a pros and tech, keeping pipelines from rusting, corroding, and protecting them. I learned a lot along that way and eventually evolved into doing HCDs throughout North America, including all fifty states. It is my opinion that the Line 5 relocation proposals, design, route, and construction techniques do everything possible to minimize environmental impact. Additionally, by selecting Michael's, both Michael's Pipeline and Michael's Frenchless, this project will be done to spec in a timely fashion and while finally in the highest standards. They are not only a reputable Wisconsin company, they are known for successfully completing safely and environmentally soundly the world's most challenging projects. Beyond my professional view of this project, I would like to say that I personally believe that the Line 5 relocation project is a net positive for our state and region. In regards to the project bringing jobs, direct spending that will help with subcontractors, workers, the local area, secondary economic stimulus to the general area as far as goods, services, for everything that's needed throughout the construction. The continued supply of crude oil and natural gas that our entire region needs and depends on. Both professionally and personally, I believe this project must move forward, so I strongly urge the Army Corps to approve the necessary permits Enbridge needs to begin and safely complete Line 5.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Riley Clare, R-I-L-E-Y-C-L-A-R-B. There is no I in my last name, it's a mistake to make. I have lived in the Schwanigan Bay for eight out of the last ten years. I came here for college in 2013, fell deeply in love, and the only reason I moved away was to make sure that I would be able to, I just didn't want to be stuck here because I was scared to leave, so I got over the fear and came back. I think there's a few specific things that I just want to touch on. I think it's incredibly important to do a full environmental impact statement after the state has finished their EIS and consulted with the Bad River. Also, for this environmental assessment, since it's already in process, if we could have a longer period for comments, just so that people can analyze it and we can have a greater diversity and quality of public input. As the grind season up here, as somebody who has extensive experience with farming, customer service, and also as a EMT, everybody is busy and dehydrated and they're not checking their emails and they're very invested in these things, but we are already in the thick of it. We need more time for everybody to take the time to thoughtfully look through everything and offer the input that you were asking for. Also, just wanted to touch on a few other things that people said in the earlier sessions. Sandy Gueke's comment about why the Bad River isn't considered to be a navigable waterway. I hadn't thought of that. That seems like a really, really big deal, if that's possibly part of your jurisdiction. I don't know the guy's name, but whoever was in the orange shirt, talking about how the White River would only be like the only navigable water body that you all are thinking about, and that leaves so many other water crossings that aren't being regulated at all, that really scares me. The big things that I wanted to personally talk about are, in the decade that I have lived here, I have seen two massive storms that have greatly changed the hydrology of our area and have made the proposed reroute so important. Every, thank you, every time it rains, I go out and I pray because I don't know if that pipeline is going to stay. We do not know what is coming, the weather is getting more volatile. I have friends who are very, like, one of my friends just got a PhD looking at modeling with paleogeology. We do not know what the weather is going to do, it is impossible to predict. We need to slow down. If we have a spill, we do not have the emergency infrastructure available in the entire region. I was a volunteer EMT for eighteen months on Madlin Islands. I could hear all of the Ashland County dispatch calls were strapped. We do not have the resources right now for any type of spill, not at all, or anything during the construction phase, during de-mission phase, or, yeah, we just, we don't have the infrastructure necessary. Our emergency services do not. I hope that you all consider that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Next speaker.
Thank you. My name is Zampi Saalman, S-A-N-T-H-E-S-A-L-M-A-N-N. I'm seventeen and I just graduated from high school. I'm from Madison, and I've been learning about the detrimental impacts of various pipelines and fighting their threats to our right to a clean and healthy environment in the future all my life. U.S. Army Corps of Engineers should do full environmental impact statement and deny the permits for the Line 5 reroute. The current draft environmental assessment does not do a sufficient evaluation of the Line 5 reroute. On environmental justice, it argues that the reroute complies with Biden's executive order 12-898. However, on missing murder and murdered indigenous people, it states that the Enbridge's solution is awareness and awareness and protection program and prevention program, with no assessment on the efficacy of this program nor the guarantee of protection of indigenous people. A full environmental impact statement would allow for proper analysis of this program and consideration of indigenous people's safety. Further, on the executive order, argues that the degree to which a clear corridor needed for the reroute will affect some systems is not definitively known, but will have no high disproportionate adverse effects. This is insufficient as it fails to consider how the tribe will This is insufficient as it fails to consider how the tribe currently uses the land. What species are found in the corridor? How would the, how would the tribe replace their lost resources? By purchasing, purchasing products is a drain on their, on their financial burden. That's a full environmental impact statement must be, must, is needed to consider to properly assess the executive order and deny the permit. On purpose and need, the environmental assessment assumes the project is economically viable and needed in the market. This is not fair assumption. Shutting down Line 5 only increases gas at the pump by less than a cent and takes the market in the wrong direction for fossil fuel, in support of fossil fuel, and against the necessary energy transition as fossil fuels become less profitable.
One minute.
Thank you. The draft environmental assessment also argues that oil spill analysis is not under the typical U.S. Army Corps purview. However, Appendix B of NEFA argues that the Corps can exercise independent judgment to define the purpose of their assessment, and a spill which could seep into water in the United States is under Army Corps purview, and thus the environmental assessment must address, fully that affects Lake Superior and protect us from any threat of a spill. Decumption Line 5, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permitting power. Has the power to protect my future as a young person and our right to a clean and healthy environment. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm in the Spottons, S-P-U-T-T-O-N-S. I'm a lifelong resident of the Great Lakes area. I'm also a registered sanitarium through the National Environmental Health Association. First, forgive me any of my elders that wanted to speak there, speaking before. Just a few things that I want to note. I've heard a few of the people that are for the permitting process talk about all the extensive training that Enbridge puts their people through, but we all know that these jobs are outsourced. Michael's Corporation is the one that actually does the dirty work. And having been, having been privileged to watch Michaels in action, know that they like to get the job done fast, not safely. It was aquiferage, crackouts all over Minnesota with a reroute. We've seen this already. We're repeating ourselves. I would implore you to reconsider. Don't be afraid that Enbridge has a 1977 treaty. It's our water. It's your guys' job to make sure that we have that for future generations. Second thing that I would like to note is the amount of people that have come out today. Thank you all so, so very much. Like, I heard another young person say, "I'm missing out on a paycheck for today." The money that I need to feed my family. But this is important, because we need clean water for my family, for my children, for my grandchildren, for my grandchildren's children. They need water and so do yours. We cannot take the risk. We've heard that we want to get this Line 5 reroute done here in the Bad River, and we want to abide by the tribe's wishes. The tribe's wishes are to keep the pipeline out of the watershed, not just some imaginary line on a map that says this is their area. That water doesn't know boundaries. The water crosses all over. And now Enbridge wants to cross 180 waterways? We can't, we can't take that risk. Please, I implore you to reconsider. Do not grant that permit. We did this for the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, my name is Mike Goodman, M-I-C-H-A-E-L, middle initial S, last name G-O-O-D-M-A-N. I'm from the Madison area. I know it's been a long day, so rather than repeating the various arguments that we've heard, proposed all day, I'm just going to leave a few personal observations. I don't get up to this part of the state that borders Lake Superior very often, so it's always a great treat to come up here. Coming up, as soon as we crossed into the Lake Superior drainage basin, we crossed over the Bad River itself, as well as numerous other tributaries that flow into Lake Superior, and it was nice to see that they were all flowing clean and rapidly, and I feel that that's very reassuring to see that, and we must take steps to see that those rivers keep flowing in that manner. I should indicate that I've been to the Kalamazoo River, the portion of it that was fouled several years ago by an oil spill, and I've seen there how the river and some of the tributary streams and lakes are still affected by that oil spill, which was a result of an Enbridge project. I, my opinion is that the track record of Enbridge is not too great as far as being able to avoid oil spills on pristine waterways. I'm just urging that that fact be kept in mind, and that we do, I believe, owe it to the indigenous peoples and the other peoples of this area, that we keep the streams that are flowing directly into Lake Superior clean and fast-flowing, like I was able to observe this morning. Thank you very much.
Stop. One minute. You want to continue? One minute.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Christopher LaForte, C-H-R-I-S-T-O-P-I-N-G-E-R-L-A-C-A-L-E-B-O-R-I-T-E. I'm an Interstate Renewable Energy Council Certified Master Trainer in Solar Energy Technology and Energy Storage. I am going to appeal to the Army Corps to deny permitting this project. I want to be clear on that. A lot of the issues around the discussion right now stand around the local damage that can happen, but I want to move into a bigger picture here, because oil pipelines are becoming stranded assets due to climate change and the global transition to a low-carbon economy. Permitting this project will strand over $400 million that can be used now to build a sustainable energy future, a sustainable energy infrastructure. There's many reasons, but I'm going to list five very quickly. To meet the goal of limiting global warming well below one degree Celsius, a large portion of the existing oil, fuel reserves, including oil and natural gas, must remain unextracted and unburned. This renders oil pipelines obsolete before the end of their economic lifetime. That's the definition of a stranded asset. This is money that disappears, that's lost from our economy. As policies number two and regulations aimed at reducing greenhouse gas emissions become more stringent, the demand for oil is declining sharply. This leads to lower oil prices, which we can see right now, making oil pipelines uneconomic to operate eventually, and that is economic stranding, number three. To shift towards renewable energy resources and electric vehicles is already reducing the demand for oil. This will lead to regulatory stranding for oil pipelines, including this top project, as governments prioritize cleaner energy sources over fossil fuels. Four, oil and gas companies will strand in the near future, next ten years, over $1.2 trillion worth of assets. Allowing these projects to go forward loses that money to our economy. Financial institutions and investors are increasingly recognizing the stranded asset risk associated with fossil fuel infrastructure, making it harder for companies to raise the money. In summary, the global effort to mitigate climate change, it's going to transition away from fossil fuels now, and this should lead these companies to shift. We have the opportunity to let our friends from Canada in Enbridge grow more renewable energy infrastructure.
Finish up, please.
They own wind turbine farms in Canada now. Let's facilitate that rapid transition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Pessau from Anali, Michigan. I'm from the Blackwater. I'm here to speak a little differently from environmental impact, which I am extremely grateful for everyone who has come here to advocate for more understanding and awareness and more deep diving into that, but I'm here to talk about the impact it has on people, the impacts that it has on indigenous people. Many hats that come on with every single pipeline that comes across any state, across Canada, across the US, any territory, it always brings violence to our communities. This is something that has been going on for generations and generations, and I speak for myself, my mother, and my grandmother every time I do. And that's just the fallout. We have generations of fallout from any type of boom city, and that's what y'all bring. It's time to move these type of jobs and move them away from our reservations, move them away from our communities, because what you do is you bring violence. Even when you don't extract the resources and flood our waterways and poison, you still flood our communities with violence. I'm sorry.
I remember the clock's not working, man. She's starting going.
Getting you back up.
I also want to talk about how if you continue to push into other territories, that's exactly what you do, even if you move away from the Bad River territory, from the reservation, you're going to start approaching on other people. And when you do that, you're going to put them in the same jeopardy. I'm barely learning my language, and I struggle to find something I was trying to say because I forgot part of it. I'm a new learner for Amma Nwaisen, and those are also things you jeopardize when you push into territories. With these violences, with people disappearing, murdering, being dumped in landfills, we lose the opportunity for next generations. So these are things you've got to think about, because now just to hear now, there's seven generations ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, I'm sorry that the clock doesn't work, so I have to do it here. Okay, please start.
Thank you, Ed. Sure. My name is Jim Spassakowski from Racine, born in Racine County in 1949. Lived the first twenty-five years of my life within three miles of our Great Lake, Lake Michigan. And I currently live in Madison, about 400 feet from an inland lake, Lake Manana. I've spent a good deal of vacation time near Lake Superior, quintessential up-north getaway for countless Wisconsinites. I have an intense affection for the water that gives us life and livelihood. I thank the Sierra Club and other environmental organizations for alerting me to this so-called hearing. I'm hoping it's not a shirley. In what world is it appropriate to make a decision on a fossil fuel pipeline when members of the general public only have fifteen days for verbal comment and a third familiarize themselves with hundreds of images and pages of material? So I first asked that the deadline for comments be extended by two or three times. The proposed reroute of Line 5 is a slap in the face to the sovereign nation of the Bad River, Band of Lake Superior, and Chippewa. Removing the pipeline that illegally crosses their land only to reroute it by surrounding their sovereign territory from three sides is nothing short of disgraceful behavior. Shut down Line 5 will be done with it. My final comment has to do with who is competent in this day and age to analyze projects that might impact delicate environments, including the humans who depend on those environments. And my answer is certainly not the Army Corps of Engineers. ProPublica released a study on November 17th of this past year. The title of the study was "Nine Times the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Notes This Calculated Badly at the expense of taxpayers and wildlife." One quote stood out for me from that study. It came from the United States Government Accountability Office. The Accountability Office said that the Corps' work was called "fraud" with errors, mistakes, and miscalculations, and used invalid assumptions and outdated data. I submit to you that only authorities with a better track record than the Army Corps of Engineers should be producing the environmental impact statements and analyses that will respond to Enbridge Corporation's misguided and harmful requests.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sister Paula Nistens, I'm a Franciscan sister, bachelor of Ration. I am a former science teacher, and I applaud the young people today because I think they are on the right track. Fossil fuels, especially oil, are known to pollute, both in the drilling of it, the using of it, and the environment that is affected by it. More and more scientists are calling for clean energy. The young kids said it, I'm saying it, and I'm an old person. So I think you really need to look at that, and this Line 5 reinforces fossil fuel. I question why a foreign company would do an Enrun through Wisconsin to take their oil. Why aren't they taking the risk of transporting oil from Canada to Canada or through Canada? I see the risk of transporting or using Line 5 as an environmental factor. Up here is the only place you can get the wild rice, which is a staple of the Native Americans here and is also the most nutritious rice on the planet. We lose it forever if any damage happens to that water source. The third reason, I have a big question, who's profiting from this? I know the workers need jobs, but there's also clean energy jobs to be had, and I hope you look for them. I'm dead set against the pipeline thing. I think we need to look at our environment, as the students said, and I think we need to be aware of the wishes of the environmental people along with indigenous people. We need to be thinking long-term, not about us, not even about our children, but our children's children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll get started, sir. We're going to do a break in about ten, fifteen minutes, or probably next three speakers, and then we're going to stop and take a break. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Josh, J-A-N-S-A. I'm a union worker from Wisconsin. I think, looking at it from the perspective of the Army Corps, you got to look at it as this company has proven time and time again, they really don't care about who's in charge, who's telling them what to do. They're operating the pipeline illegally as we speak. Multiple violations, blatant disrespect of, you know, the law and law enforcement. I personally won't comment any further on that, but I just think it's ridiculous that we would entertain any proposal from them when we know that they'll, you know, do what they do in the past and are doing currently to frankly people things.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Adam Erickson, E-R-I-C-K-S-O-N. I'm from northern Wisconsin, a longtime Enbridge employee and mechanical engineer. I've been working on the reroute since its inception. I helped out to route the pipeline to help in various types of field surveys. The team I lead serves as the main geographic information system for the project. I've helped with landowner conversations, and I've been a part of many of the public-facing forums that Enbridge has had on the project. I want to speak today about the efforts that Enbridge has gone through to create this route, creating a route that I think does a great job of avoiding just about as many features as possible, or working with landowners who are okay with having a pipeline on their property. So we started with some simple goals, route around the reservation on lands with landowners amicable to the presence of a pipeline, while avoiding local, state, and federal lands where possible, minimizing the local environmental impacts wherever possible. A little about that process. We started with a few general corridors. While we wanted to minimize impacts and costs by minimizing the reroute length, we also didn't want to create a route that was directly adjacent to the reservation boundaries. And you think about that, think about some of the options as far as the routes that we considered. The longer the route, the more the impacts are going to be just by nature of length. So having a shorter route is inherently better to minimize the impacts. The quarter that came to the top was about, avoid a reservation, parallel the transmission. So the route that we came up with avoids the reservation, parallels the transmission line for the first few miles. parallels the transmission line for the first few miles, you know, several agencies. And generally, people are happier when you route pipelines next to the other utilities. So that's a good thing. We avoided the Copper Falls State Park and the Shuamigan National Forest. Process consulted a number of different desktop data sets, including Wisconsin wetland inventories, land use, land cover data sets, aerial imagery, track boundaries, topography, to name a few, all to give us the best chance of starting with a constructible route that minimizes environmental impacts. We then started the internet process of field surveys and landowner consultation. The process included a daily feedback loop in which landowners would be amicable along with the incoming results of those field surveys, be it tribal cultural, traditional, archaeological, civil, threatened endangered species surveys, or others. As the data and landowner stances would come in, we would adjust the route and construction tactics. In some cases, adjustments would be made to avoid non-agreeable landowners or to avoid areas of tracks landowners wanted to reserve for something such as a house.
Sir, I need to cut you off for three minutes. Sorry. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
All right, hi, my name is Jennifer Smith, and J-E-N-I-F-B-R-S-M-I-T-H. I'm from Duluth, Minnesota, and I've worked with Enbridge for over 12 years, primarily in public affairs all across the Midwest and Great Lakes region. I want to say thank you to the Army Corps for hosting this event today and allowing folks to come in person and provide the comments. This is an important step and a very important process, and we do feel that, you know, this stuff is going to make the permits and the project even stronger. There have been a few comments that were mentioned today that I personally felt that needed to be addressed. I've worked on both the Line 3 replacement project, Line 5 relo project, and many, many other projects in my time here in Enbridge regarding the Line 3 aquifer issues that were brought up. I wanted to make clear that folks knew that that was not on the installation of the pipeline, absolutely, or on the HTDs. What caused the issues was the installation of trench boxes, driving sheet piling so that we can create a safe work environment for the folks that were working on the project. Those same types of sheet piling and trench boxes are used on many different types of construction. It's not just on pipeline. With that, we did follow the regulations and the multiple permit conditions that we had during that project, including with the aquifers. The vast majority of the water that was discharged from the impacted sites was returned to the immediate environment. For the Line 5 Wisconsin relocation project, ended at Enbridge, we did expanded geotechnical work and aquifer studies and found the confined aquifer conditions in Minnesota that we encountered on Line 3 do not exist along this Line 5 relocation route, as is confirmed in the very thorough draft environmental assessment that was issued.
One minute.
The other thing that I would say is that Adam talked a lot about the route. There was a lot of surveying that went on, cultural and historic. All of the cultural and tribal resources that were found through our surveys have been addressed, either through rerouting or workspace minimization. And then finally, I'll just close. Water quality and post-construction monitoring plans have been developed and will be followed once the new line is in service. So thank you again for the opportunity to come and speak. Line 5 is critical infrastructure that's providing the energy for folks here in northern Wisconsin, as well as five states and two provinces in both countries. Enbridge pipelines have coincided with wild rice for 70 years plus, and we have never impacted the wild rice or Lake Superior here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, good afternoon, friends and relatives and Army Corps officials. My name is Patricia Hammel. I'm an attorney. This is not my daily job, though. I work at legal aid defending people who are being foreclosed. Though I did represent some landowners who sued Enbridge over their refusal to provide pollution insurance on Line 621. You should require a full environmental impact statement. Take no action on Enbridge's application at this time. An EIS was required for Dakota Access. So get it right this time, learn from your mistakes. Effects on wetlands, water quality, permitting Enbridge to deposit fill, leak drilling fluid, pierce aquifers, and damaged river streams and wetlands as happened on Line 61 in Wisconsin and Line 3 in Minnesota should not be permitted. The decision document assumes that the purpose continued operation of Line 5 across Wisconsin and Michigan with the same level of oil and gas must be served. Less than 5% of the oil and gas liquids in Line 5 are siphoned off near Escanaba. None goes to Wisconsin. Maybe Line 5 could run from Canada to Canada through Canada. That would really limit effects on waters of the United States. Enbridge paid millions of dollars in fines, over a million to Wisconsin for waterway violations on Line 61, and tens of millions to Minnesota for piercing aquifers, and 28 frackouts while building Line 3. Judge Enbridge, by their actions, not their promises, they consistently violate their own proposed practices. After Enbridge Line 6B ruptured in 2010, saturating 40 miles of the Kaldem Zoo River watershed, the National Transportation Safety Board found that there was a culture of devious at Enbridge. Personnel did not follow procedures. Enbridge promises to minimize impacts, claims the wetlands they're filling in will naturally revert to their prior condition, or that they'll buy wetland credits in Douglas County, some of which don't appear to actually exist.
One minute.
They claim that blasting the Bad River in its tributaries won't result in substantial and unacceptable impacts to the river and Kakao Springs. That should not be believed. A decision on this project must be based on federal environmental laws and the water quality standards of the Bad River Tribe. It's not your job to help a Canadian oil shipper transport their product across the region in the cheapest way possible. Enbridge should bear the burden of a full environmental review. The draft environmental assessment ignores the connections between wetlands, streams, and rivers that feed off the BZ. These waterways are not a non-living environment. They are the human environment. Respect the water. Speak on behalf of the Tyler Forks River, whom I very fond.
Thank you, ma'am. Before the Colonel does the next announcement, I'm sure everybody understands, if you're anywhere in the building right now and you are supposed to be a speaker, please come to the Speaker's room so we can line people up. We're kind of late, I'm kind of getting worried here. Show Colonel.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we'll take a five-minute break, and we will resume at 5:08. Thank you.
Okay, ready to get started again? Please have your seat. Again, if you're a speaker, you've checked in, need to have you in the room, and then eventually line up on the wall over here. As you see, the line gets smaller. But please, no matter where you are in the building, if you are a faculty speaker, please come in. Okay, we can start.
Okay, five-minute break is concluded, and the hearing is now in session.
Okay, the mic is live. George Hussey, P-E-O-R-G-E, S-S-D-Y. I'm here to speak for myself, but as background, I'm Ashland County Supervisor for District 14, which is Ward 1 of Jingles and Ward 1 of White River, which would be the Western Ward of Jingles and the Northern Ward of White River. I also serve on the Ashland County Land and Water Conservationation Committee. I reside on the White River on the northwest quadrant of the flowings above the dam. This is my statement. Regulations ought not be affected by the weather of the day, but will be affected by the climate of the era. Times change. A hundred years ago, coal gasification in Ashland County was deemed a needed technology to light the streets of the city and to service the needs of homes and businesses. It is now an obsolete technology. And now, unforeseen when gasification began, our governmental and business entities have had to spend months of the past decade spending millions of dollars cleaning up the toxic environmental damage to Ashland water from the Shuamigan Bay. Seventy years ago, our community thought it was a good idea to manufacture explosives at Barksdale on the Bayfield Peninsula. When the explosive plant closed, it left the water table polluted with carcinogens. This outcome and its consequences had been either ignored or unforeseen at the inception of the explosives production process.
One minute, sir.
Fifty-odd years ago, a gas and oil produce pipeline was constructed across the Pinocchio Range watershed of Lake Superior. Within the next 50 years from now, the technologies supported by this pipeline are almost certain to become obsolete and perhaps sooner. Alternative energy technologies are rapidly supplanting those utilizing oil and gas. It is thus incumbent upon us to plan for both the known and unforeseen consequences of leaving this watershed-spanning pipeline in place forever and/or the consequences of undertaking to remove it. The purpose of this statement is to remind the review panel to consider both the long-term known consequences of the proposed pipeline rerouting under the White River and to be aware that there will be most likely unforeseen future problems if the project is approved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Good night. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Emily Clark, and I am the Co-Executive Director of 350 Wisconsin, largest grassroots climate-focused organization in the state. I'm here from Madison, Wisconsin, and I want to extend my thanks to the committee that has this opportunity to speak about the dangerous Line 5 pipeline and its potentially disastrous reroute project. As you know, Enbridge's Line 5 pipeline has been found to be operating in trespass on the Bad River Band's territory, and they've been ordered to shut down by 2026. The reroute would take the pipeline directly south of the reservation, still within their watershed and still threatening their culture and community. I have a degree in earth science and graduate work in hydrogeophysics, but I don't need years and years of formal education to know that nature does not follow humanity's geopolitical boundaries. Any spills along the reroute would still flow into the Bad River Band Reservation and from there into Lake Superior. That is how water works. The reroute would not be better for the band than the current pipeline route. Given these risks and the recent legal decision, the Army Corps needs to consider the Bad River Band, the Enbridge case, in its consideration for the impacts of the proposed reroute. Just as pipelines, though, would impact all of the communities around the proposed reroute, the larger environmental and cultural impacts of Line 5 will negatively affect all Wisconsinites and every human and living creature that relies on the Great Lakes for water and life. About 34 million people live in the Great Lakes Basin, including about 8% of the United States population. The Great Lakes represent over 90% of the United States' surface groundwater. We are privileged to have abundant water, and we benefit from the climate-stabilizing presence of the Great Lakes and the wetlands and other ecosystems that the lakes support. We have the critical responsibility to assess any and all potential threats to the lakes, including an obligation to thoroughly review the proposed reroute and evaluate how its structural operation will harm natural resources, threaten the health of our communities, our economies, and our lives, and destabilize the climate. It's a violation of the rights of indigenous communities, present and future generations, and the planet that Line 5 has continued to operate for as long as it has. Our past wrongs don't obligate us to perpetuate these injustices. I urge the Army Corps of Engineers to be on the right side of history, to do the responsible, ethical, and just thing, conduct a thorough, extensive, and honest environmental assessment of the proposed Line 5 pipeline reroute,
one minute.
including the short and long-term cultural and environmental threats it poses. I was lucky enough to be able to take today, work day, to travel here to speak to you all the way from Madison. This is not a luxury that everyone has had. The pipeline poses an immediate and existential threat to everyone. So the Army Corps has the responsibility to get as much community engagement as possible. The current written comment period is far too short. Only 15 days to review and evaluate hundreds of pages of material. This is not accessible for the vast majority of community members who will be impacted by the pipeline. Therefore, I am also urging the Army Corps to extend its comment period by at least 30 days to provoke full public involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Aaron Rapp, A-A-R-R-A-P. So I've been an operating engineer since 1998. I'm out of high school, I got into trades. I was fortunate enough to start my career on a pipeline, working for a pipeline company. I was on a restoration crew at that time, but I got to see the value and professionalism that a contractor, or as Enbridge has done in the past, and it's kind of moved me for the future of what I've become as an operating engineer. Worked my way up. I am a representative of Local 139 now. So as we all know, Enbridge, Line 5 plays a vital role in delivering petroleum to our region that we need for everyday lives. We cannot rely on any other source of transportation to deliver petroleum as safely as what a pipeline can within 99%. Being an operating engineer since 1998 and been in the pipeline industry, I've seen firsthand the great measures of signatory pipeline contractors go through to build and install a safe, superior, and enduring pipeline system. Line 5 will be built by safe and the highest skilled Local 139 members that live right here in this state. These members have been trained by the best instructors with countless years of experience and knowledge in our training facility in Oklahoma, Wisconsin, a local 139's very own 400-acre training site facility. This facility is second to none in the United States. In addition to all that, all our members have access to additional training facilities dedicated solely to the pipeline industry. First, located in Crosby, Texas, where the training goes deeper into some aspects of the industry, such as pipeline ditching classes, waterway, and wetland crossing, using Horace Ronald drilling drills, rigs, typhoon classes, and deep into environmental topics and regulations.
One minute, sir, I think the clock's broken, sorry.
The second training facility is in Boston, Kentucky. Here, the training focuses on safe operation of equipment. I heard earlier, an individual made a statement of our skill tradesmen and women don't know how to put a pipeline on hillsides. You go down to this part of the country and do the training, I'll guarantee you that you'll see that we know how to put pipe on hillsides off cranes and winches and everything else. So I guess in closing, I, you know, I listened to a lot of testimony today. Whether you're in opposition or you're for this, I do have a lot of respect for you. Everybody handled themselves today, it was really good. And I think the Army Corps of Engineers and the staff that have us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
My name's Mark Mackey, M-A-R-A-M-A-C-K-E-Y. I'm a retired U.S. Marine Corps Colonel, 23 years of military service under his belt. I grew up in Ashland. I returned to Ashland when I retired about 10 years ago. I also have a finality degree from Northland College here in Ashland. I thank you for this opportunity to speak. A lot of people don't realize it, but this is a good example of our hard-won freedoms in action. I've been to many places in the world where the heavy equipment just rolls in. They start digging, they do what they do, displacing people. I've seen it with my own eyes, without concern for people, and certainly no regard for their environmental impact that they cause. Colonel and members of the panel, look, I really wish I lived in a world that did not require pipelines to transport petroleum products from point to point. The simple fact is that I do. For the foreseeable future, pipelines are the safest, most efficient way to transport these products that make our quality of life in this region possible. Enbridge has proven beyond a reasonable doubt that this pipeline reroute can be done safely and with no harmful and state impact to the environment. Two pipelines cross my property about four miles from where I'm standing. They've been there for 71 years, if my math is correct, and they've had zero issues. That's a pretty good track record. Enbridge has clearly demonstrated their interest in protecting sensitive environmental areas, particularly wetlands, by investing a half a million dollars in particularly wetlands, by investing half a million dollars in this region through their ecogram program in the last two years. What other private company does that? Further, Enbridge is involved and engaged in this community in a wide variety of meaningful and positive ways.
One minute, sir.
Particularly veterans and veteran causes in this area. Enbridge is part of this community. The time to move forward is now. Please approve Enbridge Pipeline 5 relocation project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Edith Leosso, E-D-I-T-H-L-E-O-S-O. I'm a former travel historian, preservation officer of Bad River Band, Lake Superior Travel Chippewa, and I'm very familiar with the project that is going forward here, or is not going forward. I'm here to add to your decision-making here today. What we see and what has been provided, and I have not looked at the full document yet that has been finished, that, I forget what you're calling it now, the, some kind of CC or something. But I know what I have seen before, and that there, that the Army Corps of Engineers is only looking at what's going under the White River as well as another segment somewhere else, and that's it. What will happen in, if this is permitted, is that the entire line will be constructed then, and will go forward with the entire line. But the Army Corps is only regulating those two small sections, or three small sections, or whatever that is there. The rest of this, who regulates that? Where is the regulation going to lie then? So, in your decision-making, who then looks at the infrastructure of Ashland and the influx of workers that will be coming in and putting this place at risk for many different things? So, also, I just wanted to add a few things, too, that, you know, I'm not one for fear-mongering that has been going on here today about the loss of propane. Line 5 stops at no propane places. Thank you. And, and it never did. It goes straight from Superior to Sarnia, period. And if anybody wants to look at Enbridge's asset report, they can see that themselves. It doesn't stop anywhere. So, so that doesn't create a loss or an economic loss in the area, so they should not be raising the prices for propane around here. Also, if there is no regulation on the rest of the forty-four miles around the reservation, then what happens? Where, what happens to, if they're not following the regulation that they should, if nobody's watching? So, there's a lot to be thought of yet that is not being taken into consideration. Also, I did not see a determination for the Section 106 of section in what was provided there, yes. I don't know if.
Please, please, you're winding them.
I don't know if the, the, the determination was made by the Army Corps, and that needs to be included in your document.
Thank you.
What did that say?
No, no, sorry. Next speaker, please.
My name is Rachel Fenczky, R-A-C-H-E-L-P-E-N-C-Z-Y-K-O-W-S-K-Y. I grew up in Madison, Wisconsin, and that's also where I attended college. I worked on a biology degree there and worked for four years at the Center for Euphrenology, a world-renowned study, a center for the study of lakes and inland waters. This time, college included a summer spent at the UW's Sprout Lake Station in Vilas County, where I contributed to federally-funded long-term ecological research on fisheries and grew in my knowledge of and appreciation for aquatic ecosystems in this part of the world. I went on to obtain my PhD in biology at Georgia Tech in Atlanta, where my research focused on the complex relationships between freshwater ecosystems and the organisms that dwell in them. Now, I'm a professor of ecology at Washington University in St. Louis, Missouri. And there, I lead a research group focused on impacts of climate change on land diseases. All of this to say, I care deeply about environments and the impacts of human-caused stressors. As an ecologist, I spend my days collecting and analyzing environmental data and teaching my students about our ethical responsibility to design sound studies and communicate our findings accurately and transparently. I'm frankly appalled by the Army Corps of Engineers' lack of due diligence to study the near-term and long-term environmental impact of this Line 5 reroute project, both for this watershed and the global climate. The full scope of potential acute and cascading environmental consequences must be assessed and made public through a full environmental impact statement. I'm also a mother of two small children who just started their summer break from elementary school. They care deeply about the environment and about what is fair and not fair. Line 5 and its proposed reroute are unfair. The plan is unfair to the Bad River Band, whose treaty rights would be violated by the plan. The Bad River Band already had a federal court decide in their favor against this project, and they deserve for that decision to be incorporated into the public interest and purpose and need sections of the project decision-making. The plan is also unfair to all the people and wildlife who depend on the integrity of this watershed. And continuing to invest in new infrastructure that would continue our reliance on fossil fuels is unfair to future generations all around the world who are already facing devastating consequences of climate change. So, I ask you not to permit the reroute of Line 5. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jaden Sonoda, J-A-D-I-N-E, S-O-N-O-D-A. Enbridge's proposal to expand Line 5 around the Bad River Reservation is wrong on many levels. At the core is their disregard for native sovereignty and tribal free rights, the supreme law of the land, and environmental justice. The Bad River Band has made it clear that they do not want Line 5 with their watershed, and Enbridge has blatantly ignored that request whilst they repeatedly believe that they are respecting the tribe. There are also many Ojibwe people who reserve rights in this treaty territory, and Enbridge is threatening those by operating and trying to reroute Line 5. I'll also note that a federal judge has found the current Line 5 to be an illegal trespass since 2013 and ordered it shut down by June 2026. This must be included in the cause analysis. We see what Enbridge did during the construction of Line 3, and they themselves have acknowledged the risk in the work that they do. We can't expect them to act any differently in Wisconsin. Aside from the massive risk of an oil spill, construction itself could cause permanent damage. The Biden administration has the opportunity and responsibility to prevent harmful damage to water, communities, wildlife, and more. State borders are prolonged borders and mean nothing when it comes to how ecosystems are connected. The entire Great Lakes region is put at risk by Enbridge. The EPA sent comments to the Army Corps of Engineers where they state that Enbridge's proposal is not fit for approval and that if permitted, as is, could cause serious damage. Regardless of what the draft EA says, the Corps cannot know the full consequences of this project without doing a full environmental impact statement or to pursue this. Greenhouse gas emissions projections should also be an important piece of your review. Enbridge themselves have admitted that climate change and the need to mitigate it is impacting the lifespan of their pipeline systems, reducing it to only twenty years. They know and we know that tar sands transport is a dying industry, and it would be unwise to permit them to expand their infrastructure now, knowing that.
One minute.
I ask you to deny these permits, and to all of the agencies listening in, it's your duty to protect communities, water, the environment, and the climate, and knowing the consequences of doing nothing, you must do everything in your power to shut down Line 5. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Jacob Deragon. D-E-R-A-G-O-N. That's my real name. My real name's McGeezy. I'm from the Eagle Clan. I live right here. I live in Bad River. We're, we're all guaranteed a homeland from my ancestor's spot for this land, and we, we had to give it up. And on doing that, we were guaranteed a safe homeland, and that was from the Treaty of eighteen fifty-four. And Enbridge is a lobbyist here, which I don't think is correct. I don't think they show a lobbyist speaking on behalf of public when they're under payroll. Anyways, I hunt, I fish, I gather. I have my entire life, and I've seen places that most people in this room will never see, and it's because we have guaranteed safe home, and I can't tell you how beautiful and amazing it is to have that and to have that with my children. I'm a father of five, I'm a grandfather now, very proud, and I just think this, everyone in this room and beyond, it forgets that of all the eighteen fifty-four treaty and what we, what our land truly is, and that's ceded territory, and that territory is far exceeds this reroute. And the dangers of over a hundred and fifty-some, I don't even know how many waterways there are, the countless rivers and streams, creeks, rivers that lead down, nearly through my homeland and ours. You live on this planet, that this is the freshest body of water on the planet, and it's in danger every day. I was unfortunate and fortunate to be on the first dig on Bad River soil in seventy years, and it was scary as heck. I seen that pipe crumble, I see them, I see them tap it with a slag hammer, a welder would tap slag off, and I watched their protective coating just crumble. I watched when the machines take it off of there, I watched that pipe move, they weld over the top of it, the whole, the whole process is ridiculously scary, and it needs to be removed from our lands. I don't see any, anything else. And the other history of Bad River is, the Army Corps and the government has allowed big corporations to pollute our lands. There's well over twenty dump sites where our water isn't even, isn't even drinkable. And I think it's absurd that we're.
Can you finish that, sir?
We're even considering a fast track to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Sabine Petorka, S-A-B-I-N-E-P-E-T-E-R-K-A, and I am deeply concerned by the threats Line 5 poses to our health and climate, and I'm outraged by Enbridge's blatant disregard for human rights. So, I'm here today to express why I find the environmental assessment should be inadequate. I am asking the Corps to complete a full environmental impact statement that includes the daily risk of oil spills. As you have heard, Enbridge has a frightening track record when it comes to leak by lines. A Line 5 oil spill in the Great Lakes would threaten the drinking water of forty million people. That is a huge risk and is an unnecessary one, and EA is not complete without a holistic analysis of the impact on climate and public health. How long will this pipeline operate contaminating our water and contributing fossil fuels to our world that is already in the throes of a climate crisis killing so many people with extreme weather? The Clean Water Forest Amendment can only be granted if there is not a practical, less harmful, or effective alternative. Thus, the permit should not be granted because we do not need this pipeline. In fact, shutting down the pipeline would not greatly harm the economy or significantly raise oil prices for consumers, but an oil spill would greatly harm local economies that rely on a healthy watershed and natural resources. But this EA, the Army Corps perpetuates the myth that this pipeline is a necessity for Wisconsin, when in reality, it could be shut down, and a shutdown is the safer option for our economy, health, and environment. Finally, the Army Corps should not be releasing an EA without a full consultation with the Bad River Band. Federal court has ordered the pipeline shutdown, a decision that should be included in any discussion of Line 5's purpose and which this draft ignores. Please go complete EIS and do your part to build a safe future for Wisconsin by denying this permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Robert Owen, S-O-R-B-E-R-T-O-W-E-N. I oppose approval of Corps permits to relocate Line 5. Line 5 should be permanently shut down as an oil pipeline. A relocated Line 5 operated as an oil pipeline would pose an unacceptable risk of an oil spill into Lake Superior, Lake Michigan, Lake Huron, or Lake St. Clair. The federal government has never considered these and other risks of Line 5 in an EIS. The environmental impact statement requirement did not exist when the line was filled. Current risk is not worth taking because Line 5 is not needed now and will be progressively less needed each year going forward. Line 5 primarily delivers oil from Western Canada to the Sarnia, Ontario area, with lesser amounts to Quebec, Toledo, Ohio, and Pennsylvania. In all of these areas, the demand for gasoline is already dropping, or soon will be, and gasoline is a major part of the output of each refinery, receiving with from Canada crude oil. Most of that oil is currently going to Ontario and Quebec refineries. A sharp reduction in gasoline use in Ontario and Quebec over the next few years is a certainty. Canada's banning oil, sale to oil field, first all vehicles by 2035. In the twenty and twenty-two Armston Young survey, forty-six.
Sir, I need to cut you off. You did three minutes earlier, it looks like. No, I recognize you, the clock's wrong. I apologize, sir.
Forty-six percent of Canadians said their next vehicle would be a zero-emission vehicle. Eastern Canada is moving rapidly to EVs. While not as dramatic as in Quebec and Ontario, a trend to EVs is also starting in Pennsylvania and Ohio. Overall domestic use of Line 5 oil in both U.S. and Canada will decline. Every year will decline further. Climate change dictates pulling the plug on Line 5 now before a disaster spill, not spending an additional billion dollars on it in northern Wisconsin and the three American law, and continuing unacceptable risks to the Great Lakes. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Bonjour. I'm Melanie Connors. I'm not very good at public speaking, so I'll give us a try. I reside less than half a mile from Bad River. Having been impacted by Army Corps, Army Corps of Engineers decisions prior in the past, it's important that you take the time to review the impact of your decisions. In a time period probably between 2014 and 2015, I can't remember the exact year, but the Army Corps moved water from Lake Superior down to Lake Huron for energy use for New York City. That year, we were not able to harvest wild rice. We weren't able to harvest that harvest, so those of us who voted for human rights are sustainability, we weren't able to, so. But thank goodness for the resiliency of rice beds. So, one quart of oil can contaminate one gallon, million gallons of water. We cannot afford that anywhere, nowhere in the world can we afford that. We are in the greatest of rice lakes, and we cannot afford to have that kind of contamination. So, I advise the whole of the environmentally races, why do corporations continue to target minorities and impoverished communities? It's time to ask corporations to be totally responsible. We need Enbridge to be responsible, at least to the public, especially to minority nations like the Bad River, Red Cliff, and those impoverished communities. As I listen to testimonies, the real current pain for supporters is about their jobs and wages. Well, when we look at opposition, we're looking at people, we're looking at our generations, our next generations. If there is a spill, there is no plan in Ashland, or any near county. In years, it was like three and a half hours a week. That's not, that's not acceptable. Enbridge earned its shareholders over a billion dollars last year on motor. They have the money and the engineers that might need a better solution. There's renewable energies out there. And the Army Corps is well aware of impacts of climate change, the coastal destruction and loss of infrastructure from rising sea levels. Why do we continue to repeat corporate greed? We need to move to renewable energy. The technology exists, but it requires corporate social responsibility. Make them responsible.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Eric Schaven, E-R-I-K-S-H-Y-B-I-N-C-K. Say hi to the Army Corps of Engineers. I want you to take care of those citizens of the United States and the sovereign nation of Bad River, everything that's in the headwaters of this great area that we live in. Honor the eighteen fifty-four, eighteen forty-two, and eighteen thirty-seven treaties that we were given this land by our great neighbors, Bad River, the Nationale people. We don't have to be concerned with nineteen seventy-seven, as the judge once cited back in twenty twenty-one. Nineteen seventy-seven Energy Access Treaty is being invoked the third time. The real authority here is the tribal people, the ceded land that we all live on. As European Americans and other, instead of moving to this country. Just want to say that we live in a great area. It may tend to be had a beautiful Northern Lights Aurora. And just made me appreciate how great this place was. All the atrocities and small things that Enbridge has done aren't small things. It appears the aquifers and their other constructions, Line Three. For over eleven years, they've operated not paying the Bad River people on trespassing their land, as was found by a judge. We are aware of that. And yet, when we look at Enbridge, they just don't have the back record that we, United States citizens, should be permitting this permit drilling, filling, and continually building this fossil fuel infrastructure in our watersheds, in our communities, and in our planet that we live on. And while we had that Northern Lights, there was actually a spring peeper frog. She was on one side of the river. She heard the male singing out a song the other side of the White River. She heard it. Peep, 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 like you hear from a good frog. And she said, this is a squid male, one I can carry on my future with, one that we can have seven generations of good living with. Like the Nationale people teach us. And she was in the water and going across, the sore of the Northern Lights kind of affected her ability to sea cross in the river. Water saved swam up next to her and she said, I see you're trying to get across that male. I want to help you build that bridge to your future. And that was spring peeper, many females said, I don't trust you. Said, no, hop on my back, I wouldn't hurt you. I wouldn't poison you. I want to help you get to your future. And reluctantly, the female hopped on her back and she heard the male and she thought, I'm coming. When Northern Lights swelling and sneeze there. And she struggled for life. She said, why? You said you would protect me. You said that you wouldn't harm me. She said, why did you do this? Just by Enbridge and a sneeze.
Thank you, sir. Before you speak, ma'am, the person that's standing in front of the green shirt, ma'am, you're the last speaker before the break, okay? Don't mind anybody else else.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. My name is Linda Orillion, L I N D A O R I L L I O N. I'm an avid kayaker of Lake Superior. I breathe in the oxygen of the water with every breath I take of the cool waters with the great Ichibidi. I feel the life of the water as I wet my hands to prevent chafing. I'm a mother of seven, a grandmother of nine. I fear that our future generations will not experience the gift of clean water that I've enjoyed. What I'm hearing from many of the supporters of Line Five are personal stories of how the Michael's Corporation, Enbridge, propane dealers, farmers, et cetera, have financially benefited from the current Line Five project and the projected Line Five project. I am skeptical of the truth behind many of these words of support. I am bewildered how I heard little from many supporters of Line Five, any concern to our future environment and unborn generations. We already know that the current Line Five is not safe. We already know that it has remained illegally on the Bad River Reservation for over ten years. I came here with an open mind, as I was not aware of why we need a line from Canada through the United States to provide fuel back to Canada. I now hear that once Line Five is returned to Ontario, it is refined for use back in northern Wisconsin in the form of propane and other oil-based products. I have heard statistics from less than one percent of these products being used in northern Wisconsin to upwards towards fifty-five percent. I have heard that Enbridge has incredible safety precautions in place as well as hearing of the many numerous spills that have damaged our watersheds. I am unsure in why there is such a wide range of discrepancy. Somewhere in there is truth. In an age where we are moving forward with cleaner forms of energy because of unquidical scientific studies that have proven that fossil fuels are the main cause of negative effects on climate or water, coastal lands, rising seas, and many more detrimental outcomes. I am curious why we are relying on fossil fuels from a foreign country with millions of dollars being spent to build a pipeline with questionable outcomes without an independent environmental study. My children, my grandchildren, and our future generations deserve an independent environmental study with extended review instead of ramming a pipeline through that profits a few individuals at the expense of our environment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Free time. Next speaker.
Corey McCovern, C E R E Y, C G O B, E R N. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As I said, my name is Corey McCovern. I'm here representing the Wisconsin Labor Sister Council and the half-billion skilled dedicated members of the Labor International Union of North America, LIUN. We're here today because fighting for America's energy and energy future is crucial to our city, our country, and for working men and women. We are advocates for Line Five for many of the same reasons the broad array of groups here are. Because our nation needs less reliance on energy from foreign regions that want to destroy our way of life. We are advocates because energy extraction technology, particularly in natural gas, helps reduce climate change and can bridge to no or low carbon fuels. Sorry, I got a big flare here. We support the project because hundreds of thousands, I'm sorry, thousands of families, including thousands of Lyona families in our community across the country depend on energy work. These are not just jobs. These are not just, this is not just a pipeline. Constructing energy infrastructure is a career that can lead to a steady, reliable work and opportunities for advancing. It's a lifeline of the middle class. We believe this, we believe approval of this project will benefit thousands of working men and women who rely on steady, affordable supply of fuel and transportation for their homes. Because we have the experience, skills, dedication to make sure energy work is done safely and protects communities and workers, we can help this industry continue to grow. Lyona members have safely built pipelines since nineteen forty-nine. Our organization invests more than a hundred million a year on skills training, including a hundred sixty-four hours of training alone on pipeline construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Marco Marquez, M A R C O, M A R Q U E Z. I'm from Milwaukee. And I work with high school students from all over the state, many of whom have joined me here today to urge the Army Corps to conduct a full environmental impact statement and to ultimately deny a permit for the Line Five reroute. As I'm sure you already know, this reroute would cross a hundred and eighty streams, wetlands, and water bodies all within the Lake Superior watershed. And a spill would be disastrous, and Enbridge has a long history of oil spills. We've seen the expansion of Line Three in Minnesota cause damage to groundwater, aquifers, and wetlands. Their work in Minnesota absolutely needs to be taken into account in a full EIS for this reroute. Enbridge wants you to think that there is no other viable option for this reroute. Yet PLG Consulting released a white paper detailing how this oil could get to its final destination without using Line Five. If the Army Corps were to approve this project, it would be a signal from the federal government telling us that they don't care about the Great Lakes, they don't care about clean water, they don't care about wildlife, they don't care about native customs, traditions, or livelihoods, and they don't care about human beings. People everywhere, but young people in particular, are tired of watching local, state, and federal officials do everything they can to appease corporations that don't care one bit about anything other than money. They'll even hold a public hearing before the state permitting process has been completed. Alver Enbridge, a company not even based in the United States. On behalf of young people all over the state, we are urging the Army Corps to conduct a full EIS and to deny the permits. I promise you, young people will be watching and will be present every step of the way. If you approve the permits and a spill were to happen, it'll be your fault. So don't let it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I am Abby Nevin Schoy, the Director of Healthy Climate Wisconsin. Think about someone in your life who has needed a major surgery. Now imagine that you found out that the surgeon about to treat your loved one had a terrible record, a history full of violating critical protocols that prevent infections, leaving thirty-five ICU patients in their wake. In some cases, they completely neglected to document the infection for over a year. So the patient struggled alone without medicines or help. That same surgeon's long list of medical errors is responsible for two of the most horrific deaths in surgical history, and they recently let three patients in Minnesota bleed out on the table without reporting it to the nurse that needed to do a transfusion. After uncovering these facts, you wouldn't want that surgeon to have a license. You'd likely be questioning the medical board that authorized that surgeon to contain harming people. And you definitely wouldn't let your loved one get their care. So why would you send the Great Lakes watershed, the Bad River Band people, and Wisconsinites to a similar demise? Letting Enbridge, a corporation with a long history of illegal operations and oil spills, extend an over seventy-year-old risky pipeline through this reroute? This is so clearly not a solution, it's just reckless. Those surgical numbers I mentioned, they are the reality that Enbridge leaves behind. Line Five has spilled thirty-five times, releasing a total of one point three million gallons of toxic oil in the environment. Enbridge is responsible for the two of the largest inland oil spills in U.S. history. After the coup de grace, the Michigan Department of Health reported that the spill increased neurological and respiratory symptoms, impaired immune system function, and caused reproductive problems. Oftentimes, the health impacts go unstudied because Enbridge doesn't report the spill, like in twenty nineteen when they failed to notify the Wisconsin DNR about a pipeline spill for over a year. Then during the construction of Line Three, Enbridge violated their permits and pierced three aquifers, leaking at least two hundred and eighty million gallons, much of which they again failed to report, incurring a criminal charge. Their construction has also caused frakos, a sixty-seven percent of waterways in which they use horizontal directional drilling. And many of the products used in that drilling are listed as proprietary, which means we don't know what chemicals potentially dangerous to human health are entering our drinking water, the water that millions of people rely on to fish, clean their hands, water their gardens, and drink. As an organization of over eight hundred health professionals, we know that healthcare has limited power in the face of a crisis. It is foresight that prevents an emergency and saves lives. Right now, you have the power to prevent real and irreversible harm. A full environmental impact statement would show that Line Five is an unnecessary risk to the public and shutdown is reasonable, as evidenced by the federal court shutdown order. The assertion that the reroute will not affect the fate of Line Five is illogical. It will cease to operate if the Army Corps declines the issue of permitting. Please protect public health, tribal rights, and our climate, and do not grant it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm Randall Markon, R A N D A L L M A R K O N. Line Five crosses the property that I have owned and lived on for over twenty-five years. I have had the pleasure of working with representatives from Enbridge whenever they have needed to perform vegetation maintenance or pipe inspections on my property. Enbridge personnel have always been courteous, professional, and responsive to all concerns and questions that I have proposed. Everyone here benefits from the products transported through Line Five, whether it's at the gas pump to fuel your car, petroleum products needed to build your car, the oil, natural gas, and propane to heat our homes, our schools, fuel our farms, and keep our businesses operating. Shutting down this line would cause the propane facility just west of us in Superior to stop operating, causing a shortage in this area, affecting all of us with higher fuel costs and supply shortages. It would take over two thousand semi trucks a day to move the amount of product that currently flows in this line. I've worked in transportation for over thirty years. Replacing Line Five with trucks or trains is not only impossible, it would be an extremely dangerous method of attempting to replace the safest possible way to transport this fuel, and that safest method is using pipelines. Enbridge has done an exceptional job in planning this reroute that has the least impact on our environment. This plan goes beyond regulatory requirements respecting potential impacts placed on the wetlands and watersheds that we love and enjoy for our recreation, wildlife, and clean drinking water. The reroute will bring an estimated seven hundred construction jobs to this area, supporting our local labor union members, our local businesses, and native-owned businesses. Line Five is a critical piece of infrastructure to transport the essential fuels that we need and use. This line crosses my land about a hundred yards from my own house. If it's not in my backyard or your backyard, it will be need, it will need to be placed in someone else's yard to provide us with our fuels. We do not have the option of replacing these fuels. If we built windmills, people protest the power lines. If we try to use renewables, they protest the renewable power plants. When the time comes to replace the pipe on my land, I will welcome it. It is time to proceed with this relocation project for the benefit of our families, our labor union members, our businesses, and our future here in this beautiful area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Jane Brookes, and I am J E A N B R O O K S. And I'm from Fort Atkinson. And I'm here to sum this all up for you. I think that the main thing that I'm hearing, and I'm hearing so much good information today, but I do know that that even if the employees here are the best in the land and the, and the Enbridge is the greatest concern for our environment and the land in practice, we are in a climate change. And if we are in a climate change, which our government and many world governments and which the UN tells us is actual and is upon us, and we have we have, we're in the midst of the sixth mass extinction in this world, and we're having people who are homeless because of the climate in this world, and we live in unsustainable culture. So therefore, we really need to face up to it. I think we've run the gamut. And it's climate change, and we've got to face it yesterday. And this is a good step toward it because we already have a probably a very dangerous pipeline going on through our Great Lakes. So this is a good time to shut this pipeline down and to work to improve our climate. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we do a break here, I'd like to make the same announcement. If you are a selected speaker and you haven't spoken, make your way to this room, no matter where you are in the building, in about fifteen minutes or so, we're going to rejoin this thing. If you've been selected, please come to the room, otherwise we'll be breaking the speakers. Sure.
Thank you. Up next, we will take a fifteen-minute break and we will resume at six fifteen. Okay, just a couple reminders before we start the hearing again with the speakers. If you are a selected speaker and you are anywhere in the building, please come to the speakers' lobby in the auditorium. You'll be lined up based on when you're ready to speak. But please come into the auditorium if you are a selected speaker. Another reminder, all attendees are welcome to quietly join or exit this room as capacity limits allow. But please respect each speaker's opportunity to comment and refrain from any disruptive behavior. Should a disruption occur, the presiding officer may pause or adjourn the hearing. Okay, first speaker may approach.
Bonjour, my name is Alexis Koski, and we're going to run a video to speak today.
Just speak a little closer. I'm a little slow.
I'm sorry. Bonjour, my name is Alexis Koski, and we're going to run a video to speak today. I'm a Bad River Band of original youth, of original youth, and the youth leader, a direct descendant of a long line of travel mentors of the Bad River Band in Wisconsin. Our tradition of youth leaders from the Great Lakes focusing in the Twin Parts area of Minnesota and Wisconsin water protection, and my W opened travel to the rights. Indigenous people are sacred along with our relationship with water. Everyone on earth deserves clean drinking water. It shouldn't be something that anyone has to fight or protest about. Clean drinking water is a basic human right for everyone. We deserve to have safe water to live out what water itself is life. Women and water are sacred. Nations of people depend upon the health and well-being of our women as sacred water carriers. Our women are haunted by the extraction industry pipelines, man- Our women are haunted by the extraction industry pipelines, man cans, and the ongoing epidemic of M-I-W. So personal or sacred water also impacts our future generations, including me and my children. We have a responsibility to protect the land and water. We have been here and part of the land for millennia. We deserve to have a say in what happens to our land, our water, and our bodies, to save our water and to save our nations. Last summer was my very first snow going where I say. I can remember the way the water had flowed when the boat had moved through it, or how full the boat was after we were done.
One minute.
The taste of freshness and even some of the fish swimming in the water that Mother Earth has given us. My question for you and everyone here else that supports this pipeline is, what happens when that water gets spilled with thick black oil that'll poison the rice and fish that we use to drink, use to grow crops, or to cleanse ourselves with? What happened with my children, grandchildren, and the ones born after? Do you feel shame or guilt after you've heard so many voices made here? Enbridge has suffered a horrible past for years with pipelines just like this one. So why let this continue? It's not a matter of how, it's when. To become a sacred and stop all that by, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Tom Boswell, B-O-S-W-E-L-L. I reside in Madison, Wisconsin. Soon to relocate to Baroque. I'm very familiar with this region for various reasons. Years of camping in the Apostle Islands, performed a job with the Wisconsin Wetlands Association, and a major journalism project I did during the proposed Milwaukee Mine Foundation for Seafaring. It serves me that there's an elephant in the room, or maybe three elephants in the room, that are not discussed as much as they should be. It should be part of any EA or EIS process. There's a climate crisis, a water crisis, and something called treaty rights, and all are linked. The Tarasian's pipelines are a major driver in climate chaos and warming of our climate makes a breach in the Line Five more likely if not inevitable. Climate change leads to huge ecological losses that threaten the Bad River, the Coggin Sloughs, Carillon Lake, Wild Rice, and Lake Superior itself. This pipeline is almost as old as I am. In sixteen years, between two thousand and two and two thousand and eighteen, Enbridge Pipeline spilled three hundred and seven times, releasing two point eight million gallons of oil and toxic fluids. A two thousand eighteen Greenpeace court noted that an Enbridge pipeline leaks ruptures an average of every twenty days. Surely there will be more as the infrastructure deteriorates and the climate becomes more unpredictable. In its draft EA, the Army Corps asserts that shutting down Line Five would be unreasonable. If this were the case, a federal court would not have ordered the shutdown last year. This court order was not mentioned in the Army Corps study.
One minute.
At one point, Michigan Governor Gretchen Whitmer ordered the line closed, but Enbridge defied the shutdown. Whitmer said that Enbridge has imposed on the people of Michigan an unacceptable risk of a catastrophic oil spill in the Great Lakes could devastate our economy and our way of life. According to testimony at last year's trial in Madison, Line Five accounts for just three percent of Baroque petroleum products in its service region. It will require two massive risky projects, the Bad River reroute at four hundred and fifty million and the Mackinac Strait Tunnel at five hundred million. Why jeopardize the Great Lakes, ten percent of the world's fresh water, with so little oil and at such a price to the planet and its people? Here's what Mike Wiggins of the Bad River Tribe said. This is one of those forks in the road where we need to choose healing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Kylie Griffin, K-Y-L-E-E-G-R-I-F-F-I-N. Rerouting Line Five Pipeline is not the solution. Enbridge has done enough damage to the members of the Bad River Band already. Line Five has reportedly leaked thirty-three times since nineteen sixty-eight, spilling one point one million gallons of...
So just an announcement for, uh, announcement for how the rest of the speakers will go. If anyone was a selected speaker throughout this session and you are not going to the speaker wall to speak, please do so now, and you can get lined up to speak. After we go through those speakers, anyone else who would like to speak, we ask that you please go to the registration desk in the lobby to sign up to speak. You may then head into the speaker lobby to get in line. But keep in mind, the hearing will still conclude at eight p.m. Okay.
My name is Christine Davis, Christine, the C-H, Christine, C-H-R-S-D-A-N-D-A-S. Thank you very much for your service and for being here tonight. I want to talk about a few things. First of all, the need for an all-in-the-above energy strategy. Also, I talked a little bit about renewables, specifically Enbridge's, safety, and then the closing of my comments about moving this process forward, acknowledging that there are thirty more days in the public comment period, so people can provide comments and whatnot. So going back for a little bit, I have been born and raised in Wisconsin. I attended the University of Wisconsin at Madison. True blood, Bad River rich in corn. People who know me know that. My dad built career with temporary construction jobs. My grandfather landed at Normandy eight years ago, so again, thank you for your service. So when I talk about the all-in-the-above energy, right now, we have just a huge, huge demand for electricity. We just don't have enough renewable projects in the pipeline right now to, to take care of all those energy needs. If you look at the streaming, all the data centers that are going on, renewables are being built quickly, but not quick enough. We need to still have an all-in-the-above strategy that includes projects like the reroute project because we do need the products that go through that line. There was talk about all the transportation uses, and I won't go back into that, but I'll add some others, medical. If you think about what happened with COVID, all the products that are derivative from petroleum products that are used for our masks, our test kits, our cures, and all that stuff, all that came from petroleum. Not just one industry, and there are many other industries that are also derivative of petroleum products. Thus, the all-in-the-above, um, policy is needed. Next, getting into renewables. Again, Enbridge is in the renewable business, the twenty-three wind farms, fourteen solar facilities, one of which was very close where my daughter went to school at the University, Colorado State University, and that was a project with Exxon Energy, which provides electricity here in Wisconsin.
One minute.
Still a record. I talked about one child. My other child went to school at the University of Western Michigan in Kalamazoo. So I firsthand have seen the cleanup effort, and I do know that Enbridge is responsible for spills. And that is incredibly important because of the wallet quality issues that have been talked about here. They're responsible for the cleanup and for the cost. That was a broken day in Enbridge's history, and since then, that company has changed all its policies, its entire safety, and the requirements that they provide in contractors, how they handle incidents, the responses, everything. And since then, if you look at their record, in the last five years, it's ninety-nine point nine nine nine. Five years in a row, and going on back since two thousand and ten, their safety record is far ahead of the difference. So again, I close, thank you for your service, thank you for this common period. I know we have thirty days left. So for those of the people that aren't able to be here today, there is plenty of time to look at the record, to see how thorough it is, to know that it's complete, and that this process needs to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Anne Chertier, spelled A-N-N-E-C-H-A-R-T-I-E-R. I live in Ashland. I'm a retired Spanish teacher. I have lived in this area since the late eighties. And I thank you for this opportunity to express my opposition to the relocation of Line Five. Undoubtedly, petroleum products are important to us, and they have played an important role in our lives and in our progress. Petroleum saved the whales, or there wouldn't be any left because that's what we were burning before. I don't know that I have anything new to add. I just want to make sure that my voice in opposition for this relocation be heard by you who have the power, the authority to say yes or no. And I think you ought to say no because the time has come to stop extracting oil from the ground that is putting carbon into the atmosphere and causing climate change that's destroying so many of our coastlines and causing havoc throughout the world. Instead, money needs to be invested in renewable energy. I understand that Enbridge invests in renewable energy, and I'm very pleased to hear that because I have absolutely nothing against any of the Enbridge workers. It's just that it's a system designed to profit. Enbridge is about making money. I just wish they would invest in renewables and not build a new pipeline around Bad River, still in the watershed. The, um, the Coggin Sloughs that have been mentioned has some of the best wild rice in the world. Thank you. And I would like to bring forth another, or a analogy, and that is, we know that you are responsible for making sure that any project is done responsibly with consideration for the environment. But keeping the oil system alive is like keeping a safe patient alive beyond its time. It's time to put the oil industry to rest and certainly not build a new pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Michelle Johnson, M-I-C-H-E-L-L-E-J-O-H-N-S-O-N. Thank you for the opportunity to talk today and spending your time here in Ashland. I'm a lifetime Wisconsin resident from northern Wisconsin. I live on the shores of that big beautiful lake out there, eight fish from that lake every week, and I'm also an Enbridge employee. A couple things I want to talk about for this, for our project here. We have, have, we have had a very thorough assessment with respect to cultural resource impacts, potential water quality impacts, and groundwater interactions, as well as erosion and sediment risks associated with the project. Our project design also reflects a mindful plan to mitigate and minimize impacts on wetlands, water bodies, threatened and endangered species habitat, archaeological and cultural resources, and any other areas that might impact the health and vitality of the forests and fields in this area. It's also important to note that our approach goes beyond regulatory requirements and considerations with respect to the burdens or potential impacts placed on wetlands and watersheds within the construction footprint. We have detailed assessments and have plans in place for the conversion of selected forest wetland habitats to emergent habitats, as well as maintaining overall wetland functions and values, and the mitigation for both temporary and permanent wetland impacts. We look forward to the final environmental assessment and the permits so that we can together protect the environment during construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Sarah, I'm a San Diego resident. I am a stakeholder from eighteen fifty-four, Minnesota, Chicago, Kentucky. And I have mentioned on that brief earlier, if you approve this today, you're saying you need more. Because that is my application of eighteen fifty-four to continue in eighteen thirty-seven immunity policy. Again, I ask, how can you continue with this permit? There's a lot in it to leave a horizontal building, which we admit is a reason why they have caused some extenuating damage on the Minnesota这片 water. My land is still eating six gallons and six million of Enbridge's land. Who will pay for the waste of that? That's from online business, I didn't think. But the United States of America, where a lot of foreign LLC companies make international law. If a foreign company cannot pay another foreign company to police its own people, Stephen King and Allah have seen. Who's going to pay for that? Furthermore, if they approve this, then again, you're practically taking out of the bad reservation, but now you're just moving into security, right? And that is why the treaty said I have the right to be a project. And now it's done, the Army Corps is in the, deeper obligation. So through the ignition of people in this land, and the treaty that we sign to become a nation, a country that lives with them over seven hundred and twenty-seven nations. So then I remain to seven hundred water, okay? I read this on the city, article number six, true paper of policy. And again, knowing that the horizontal jelly is the problem. How can you continue permitting the law to do these terrible behaviors? The Great Lakes has ten percent of the roads, like the supply of fresh water, ninety-five percent. Self-depression, self-sustaining, as eighteen forty-three, then I have to defend. That is what you are suddenly doing toward it. Thank you. This is now the problem.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Monroyna, M-O-N-R-O-Y-K-N-U-P. As I was young, I was told to always remember that I can speak louder than words. I have continuously seen my climate change since I've lived in Wisconsin my entire life. The snowy season sucked out and harder snowfalls, and I can't remember if David asked you after snowfall where I didn't have a snow day at school. Line Five will admit, sorry, I don't have a script, but I think we're speaking. Sorry, um, we need to shut down Line Five. People at my school, which has over three thousand people, all agree with me. I can't say unanimously, but I have so many club members on my team that encourage me to come out here to speak to you for about seven hundred years. I am urging you so strongly to shut down Line Five. My future career as an environmental engineer relies on this. I need you to shut down this pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, one more info before we go to the next speaker. All right, next speaker.
Um, yes, I know this is the second time that I have gotten up to speak, and I have offered this lady to speak before me, she was like...
Excuse me, I hate to interrupt, but we cannot have speakers speak multiple times.
They're hustling.
I, I know there was one before, but you cannot...
Yeah, and I can, I can let those who have these folks speak before me, but if the time is allotted, um, I think that I should be able to allow to speak again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
My name is Cynthia Samels, C-Y-N-T-H-I-A-S-A-M-E-L-S. I grew up overseas, daughter of an IBM father. I have lived all over New York City, San Francisco, Minneapolis. My grandparents and great-grandparents are from Duluth, or from Duluth. I now live in the cabin my father bought for them after my grandparents retired. I'm in Iron River, Wisconsin, about twenty, twenty miles west of here. I moved up here permanently about eleven years ago. I moved up here with no family. They're on East and West Coast. I don't have any kids. I have my fur babies, um, my dog and cat. I am no longer married. I'm by myself. I, no one understands why I continue to live up here. And my, my reasoning is that I have a connection with these... And my, my reasoning is that I have a connection with these waters. I have a connection with these waters that I can't put into words with you. It's, it's spiritual, much like, much like the indigenous traditions, their, their culture, their way of life. I envy that kind of relationship that they have with fire, with water, with the ground, with the skies, with Mother Nature. Mother Nature is my guide. Mother Nature doesn't play politics. Up here, Mother Nature does what she wants. Last year, we had twenty feet of snow. This year, we have five? I'm not sure. The waters up here are all connected.
One.
They're all connected. The risk to one tiny body of water will affect so many, so many more. Lake Superior to me is a goddess. There would be no reason for me to live up here should anything happen to her. Your mission is to deliver vital engineering solutions in collaboration with our partners to secure our nation, energize our economy, and reduce disaster, disaster risks. You must reduce disaster risks by doing an environmental impact study, which will lead you to conclude that this line needs to be shut down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Gordon Cunningham, G.O.R.D.O.N.C.U.N.N.I.N.G.H.A.M. Thanks for listening to this testimony. And I usually start off, when I start talking about Enbridge, with kind of a diatribe about them being a wallace, rogue, foreign entity with their own militia that has a horrible reputation for both disasters that they created and cleanup and being irresponsible, lying to public, et cetera. My mom told me that if you can't say something nice, don't say anything at all. So I'll skip all that and go straight to how wonderful the testimony of youth has been today and how I think that that's the biggest consideration that you should make for the decisions you come to concerning this pipeline. The youth are the people most impacted by good and bad decisions from now on. I've had my, a great life on a, on a planet that I didn't realize was going to have a problem within my lifetime, and only in the last couple decades have started to realize that we're in deep trouble. And all the youth has explained the science to you. There are heartfelt concerns about their future, the environmental aspect of having a pipeline that pumps millions of gallons of toxic waste that will be burned and fossil fuels. And it is, and there's been testimony today about how this is a necessary pipeline, as all pipelines are, which is just absolutely not the case. Youth is the most heavily impacted group in this, in this testifying today. And they have the most stake in the future of the decisions that you make. And so I think that that's the most thing that you should consider. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Oh, bonjour. Est-ce que vous êtes indigènes? N'est-ce pas? Moi, je suis bien dû à vous. Enishabé est prêt. So my name is Essie Leosso Corbin, E.S.S.I.E. Last name, Leosso Corbin, L.E.O.S.O.I've been Corbin, C.O.R.B.I.N.E. I think I took a mistake there. I wanted to say, and I said earlier, my language, which is the natural language of this land, and that I've heard a lot of people introduce themselves or how long they grew up in Wisconsin. I just wanted to say to the Army Corps that I'm the seventh generation of Enishabé in this part of the world. And we still continue to speak the natural language of this land. And so I'm grateful for that. I also want to let you know that I oppose the reroute of line five for obvious reasons, as you are sitting there with your bottles of water. And many of us are old enough to know that we used to be able to just drink water out of the tap and didn't have to go buy the water. We also know that, that the other reason that I oppose it as well is I heard a lot from the people in the green t-shirts about economic opportunities and a lot about jobs. And this isn't about economic opportunities for us. It only perpetuates economic disparities for people in this part of the world. It's designed that way. It's designed to overlook us. We know that already. History speaks for itself, right? We know that because we are survivors of that system. We have been surviving since our first contact, the early days of settlers, and we continue to survive. I also oppose the reroute because, I oppose it because of the issue, not because I don't support jobs. I do believe in jobs.
One minute.
And so, oh, one minute? Okay. I want to talk about the climate change, so I'm going to skip down here. And I want to talk about it because I was a part of one of the main workers at Bad River as a social family service director of the flood of 2016. I sat on the task force during that time of the flood, and nobody from Enbridge came to those meetings or even called and worried about that pipe when that flood came and took up all of Bad River. We were disconnected from the world. The highway was shut down because of the flood. And no one ever came from Enbridge or even called to check on that pipe. Nobody. As a matter of fact, nobody even came to help us. Who came to help us? Other tribes came to help us. That's who came to help us. How I know this is because I set up, I was in charge of all of the supplies for the people that were stranded in Bad River, because you couldn't move back or forth. So that's what I know what will happen if a spill happens. Who will help us? Who will help us?
Thank you.
Ni gosh.
Better screen.
You got ass all over. We're delayed.
We get paid the whole time.
Okay. So we've reached the end of the queue of speakers who haven't had a chance to speak yet. So again, I'll reiterate it. If anyone was a selected speaker and you have not gone in line to speak, please get in line over here on the side of the room to the speakers queue. After those speakers have had a chance to speak, anyone else who would like to speak, again, please go to the registration desk in lobby to sign up. You may then head into the speaker lobby and get in line. And the hearing will conclude at eight o'clock. For those speakers who have already spoken, I'm sorry, but we cannot allow you additional time to speak in fairness to the other speakers at the hearing. But you are encouraged to submit written comments.
Which other speakers?
In fairness to the speakers.
Then talk, you don't have to report it, you can have a snub of a rest.
We've had multiple sessions, and there were speakers early in the day who probably would have liked to speak additional times.
Well, right now, it's seven thirty-five, we have twenty-five more minutes, sir.
I know, I know.
It's the honor.
In fairness to everyone, we need to only allow.
So I don't know if you're afraid of like the exhibits that I will be from Wadukawat Amicup. There are exhibits that we had a drone flyover in Enbridge. This is exactly what they don't want you to see. Wadukawat Amicup, go to the website, please.
YouTube.
Or YouTube. So this is everything that they did. Exhibit A, exhibit A, this is going to be exhibit A. As you can see, where they did the.
We want a five-minute recess.
He's cutting me out. Yeah. You can take your recess. We want to hear what these ladies have to say. How they keep the boat. Thank you.
I want to hear what they have to say.
So, many images show both the natural springs and the Enbridge springs. See that where we have the natural springs and the Enbridge springs? So this is where they broke through the aquifer and is thermal.
Running a public hearing, taking public feedback. We are listening to your voice.
Exactly, and that's what I'm saying. That's exactly what I'm saying.
Where we give every person who selected three minutes to provide their feedback.
Yeah.
We encourage everyone to submit unlimited comments via email or regular mail, and retrieve all comments whether written or verbally delivered with the same weight. We do have an additional speaker that signed up, and I'd like to provide that individual with an opportunity to share their three minutes' comments. Thank you.
This one, you can see the plume in the river, where the water is, the hot water, the cold water is being introduced into the river. Water's up next.
Please step aside. Thank you.
I just want you to accept these as exhibits. I numbered them all.
Thank you.
So I also have some water and some wild rice as exhibits. And like I said, we really should be having a ceremony, because if you have my life in your hands, I need to talk to Creator. We need to talk to Creator.
We have another speaker who would like to share their three minutes in the public hearing. Thank you.
Well, regardless, he'll still get to you.
Okay. Next speaker, please.
I want to start that I agree with everything that those ladies had to share before me, and I appreciate them having me versus her. I'm just going to read off a few dates and occurrences. Alice. On March first, the Smokey House wildfire in Texas killed two as it became the largest wildfire in Texas history, the second largest in U.S. history. On April fourth, in Zimbabwe declared a national disaster over drought while schools in the Philippines closed amongst an extreme heat wave. On April eleventh, coastal heat records were set every day for the past thirty-sixty, three hundred and sixty-five days. flooding in Pakistan and Russia displaced eleven thousand people. Over a hundred people were killed across floods in Pakistan and Afghanistan. On May eighth, ninety-plus people were dead from flooding in Brazil. On May ninth, hundreds died and one thousand thousand displaced across East Africa. May was the twelfth consecutive month to break heat records in the history that since we've started taking records. On May twenty-eighth, two thousand dead from a landslide in India. And May thirty-first, twenty-four deaths from a heat wave in Southeast Asia. This is a warning.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers who have not spoken who would like to speak? Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Alexander Waters. I live here in Ashland, Wisconsin. And I'm sweaty, I'm dirty, I'm exhausted. I could have stayed home. The reason I'm here is because this is really important. Enbridge five, line five crosses the landry farm. It's been there since they put it in, about seventy years ago. They're not easy people to deal with. They're not straightforward. They're not in a hurry to take care of the people who their company's decisions affect. Once they have what they want, which is to push their line through, wherever that is, doesn't matter. They've got what they want, and they are going to do whatever they want, however they want. This is a chance to stop that. So why am I filthy and tired? I'm a partner. I know full well that things don't always go to plan. Sometimes things go really badly. So you might have experience with that, too. What we can do is we can look at what might go terribly wrong and what we can't afford to go wrong and prevent it. Put the brakes on before we're in an emergency. We can't afford to have Lake Superior or Lake Huron filled with the contents of Pipeline Five. I know right now we're talking about the reroute going around Bad River.
One minute.
Thank you. But we're going back to, so we're talking about preventing things that could go very wrong. The other thing is, what is the weakest link in the system? We've got Pipeline Five aged about seventy years. Even if they manage to bully their way through and around Bad River, it doesn't matter, because they're still going right through the straits in Macanah, incredibly foolish attempt. I mean, what couldn't go wrong with putting a pipeline through the most turbulent part of the Great Lakes system at a point where several Great Lakes meet? What could not go wrong? So I think this is really a good time to think about what we can prevent from happening, because once the cat's out of the bag, it's not going back in.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Next speaker. Hello, my name is Kathy Smith, and I live in Bayfield. I didn't prepare anything. A little emotional after that last presentation. I feel like I need to say something. I stopped to say, no, I, I don't. So with the line five, I think we need to shut it off. I think we need to think of future generations, not just the immediate future. The jobs will not last a long time. We need to think much longer than that. Her view needs to be out as our Enishabé people believe in the seventh generations. We need to also. I'm also here because I'm also tired. I'm a teacher in Bayfield School, and I, that's the last week of the school year. It's not an easy time, it's very busy, but it's really important to be here. So I just felt like my voice should be recorded as against the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers who have not spoken who would like to speak?
Is it like the industrial registers are open now? If you haven't spoken, don't.
It's open if you have not spoke, you may.
I have not spoken.
Okay, yeah, please go over to the speaker lobby, you may be.